All right, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and call our City Council meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Zendejas?
Present.
Vice Mayor Allen?
Present.
Councilmember Duggan?
Here.
Councilman Supranoff?
Here.
Councilwoman Kerr?
Present.
Councilwoman Sorrow?
Present.
Councilmember Yoranga? Councilman Austin?
Here.
Councilmember Rixody?
Here.
Mayor Richardson?
I am here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Just a few announcements. First, we need to go to our city attorney to report out on closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So there's one item to report out on from closed session, and that is that we have approved a settlement in the matter Suzanne Gordine versus City of Long Beach on the amount of $375,000. And that is the only item to report out from closed session.
All right, thank you. We're going to go to Councilman Austin for a moment of silence and a pledge.
Thank you. If I could ask you all to just give us a moment of silence and join in moments of silence and collective thought and pray for peace in the world and here in Thank you. If you'll all rise, if you can, place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Today, we have a Black History Month presentation, but before we go to that, I know there's a number of folks here for item number nine that have signed up for public comment. We're actually going to reschedule that for March 24th, 21st. Let's pull it up so we can just make the motion now to continue the item so folks can have the rest of their evening back. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any public comment on continuing?
Hold on, I'm sorry. Do I need to recuse even the word?
Oh, yeah, you need to recuse yourself.
Okay. I'm recusing because I was on the planning commission when this item originally came before it.
Thank you. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to continue. Is there any public comment on continuing this item? Okay, seeing none, members, please cast your vote.
Motion is carried, 7-0.
Fantastic. Councilmember Rixody, you can return to the room. We'll now kick off with our one presentation. I'll hand it over to Councilman Austin. And we can give it a moment for folks to reset the room.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It is my pleasure to welcome everybody here this evening, particularly on this Black History Month special meeting. We have a presentation, and I'd like to call up Mr. Errol Parker and Sharon Diggs Jackson from the African-American Cultural Center. Black History Month provides us a chance to recognize African-American leaders that have paved the way in our community and reflect on the historical foundation upon which the African presence in America has existed and really shapes American culture. To present on the history of African-Americans in Long Beach and the role of African-American Cultural Center in preserving that history, we have Mr. Errol Parker and Sharon Diggs Jackson representing the African-American Cultural Center. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and the council. We have a video slide presentation that I think will say pretty much what we want to say. I'm a member of the African-American Cultural Center Board of Directors. Al, thank you so much for starting that organization and all the council people that were represented and getting that off the ground. We'll have a few things to say after the video, so let's look at the video right now.
The African-American Cultural Center of Long Beach Board of Directors and Staff are very proud to have this opportunity to share with you a Black History Month presentation. We can look back as far as 1884 to see the first mention of blacks in Long Beach. We know that from the earliest of times, the church, the black church specifically, was the strength behind the African-American community, even until this very day. We know that equality has been a fight since the early 1900s in areas such as housing, in areas such as education, and fair and equal opportunity for jobs and socioeconomic growth. We know that many of the opportunities that we now relish in were because of fights by great organizations such as the NAACP and the Anti-Discrimination Committee of Long Beach, and leaders such as Reverend Joe Kroom and others were at the heads of such organizations in the 40s, in the 50s, and 60s and beyond, even until this very day, and inclusive of our education system as well as continued efforts for housing so that everyone could enjoy a great quality of life. From a political perspective, to a local rally in the streets to say that we deserve the best that our city can offer because we indeed will give our best to this great city, because we believe that strength behind us creates greatness ahead of us. And African-Americans are dedicated to such strength to make our city everything that we all hope it to be. When you think about the African-American Cultural Center, I see it as the crossroads. We see it as the crossroads. You should see it as the crossroads of opportunity to learn and immerse yourself into the African-American culture and all that it means to our great city.
Welcome to the African-American Cultural Center of Long Beach. Our mission is to celebrate, cultivate, and advance our African-American heritage. Look around at our outstanding exhibit, and you will see the compelling historical story of the African-American experience as only we can explain it. We also offer weekly programs such as our West African drum and dance classes and our Pan-African study group. Stay connected with us by becoming a member of our organization.
Our goal at the African-American Cultural Center of Long Beach is to share the historic presence of the African-American community in Long Beach. It's also our goal to be sure that we empower those that come to learn, those that come to share their stories. It is our hope that we can be a catalyst for change in every positive aspect of life that those of us watching this presentation know to be so important. To tell these stories, we have gallery exhibits that go back to the days of slavery and come forward to our current times. It is our intent to offer educational classes, not only about American history, but about African-American history, because indeed, black history is American history. We want to have collaborations with community partners, and anyone watching who wants to be a collaborating partner should give us a call and let us know how we might work together. Increasing community awareness is most important, and that's why this presentation is such a great opportunity. Greatness ahead of us is indeed actively found in facility being owned by the African-American Cultural Center. We deserve that, and our community deserves that, and we look forward to it happening. We look forward to welcoming tourists from around the world to not only learn about Long Beach, but learn about its people, its culture, and the African-American presence and all that makes it great. We appreciate you, and we appreciate this opportunity for sharing this African-American history moment with you this evening that will continue on for generations ahead. Thank you.
I would like to, I'm representing Derrick Simpson, who was out of town, enjoying himself at the Mardi Gras, Rex. I wish I was with him, but I'm representing him here. And I'd like to present our board members. If you stand, all the board members of the African-American Cultural Center, please stand. We have Sharon Diggs Jackson. We have-
Jackie Quarles.
Jackie Quarles. We have Charles Brown. We have Judy Seale. Let's give them a hand. I would like to say that when you looked at that, look at that video, resilience and courage comes to mind. These men and women in Long Beach who stood up, abused, in many cases, to do a lot of things that we're enjoying today as an organization in the worst slavery system that ever existed on the planet Earth, and we've been resilient and courageous in doing that. We do not want a step backwards. We want to move forward in this great country that we have, and for us all to work together, not only for the African-American Cultural Center, but for all justice and truth in our society. I want to thank you so much for this opportunity, and thanks, Al, for putting it all together for the African-American Cultural Center. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Al, anything else? Okay, Councilmember Rixody?
I just want to thank my colleague, Councilman Al Austin, for bringing this presentation. You know, as an African-American woman, raising children, you know, I have, I think you all know that I have a four-year-old and a two-year-old that I'm raising in this city, and it makes me incredibly proud the way that we uplift our black community and the ways that we continue to move our community forward. And so I just want to thank the African-American Cultural Center. If you haven't gotten a chance to go to the Expo Center and really experience the exhibits they put, I mean, it is, it is a sight to behold. These folks take such special care when it comes to the types of exhibits, the richness, the artifacts, and the way they walk you through the history, much of which are even things that, as being a black American who cares about history and as somebody who deeply cares about education, every single time I go to one of their exhibits, I learn something new, right? And I think as those of us who value being lifelong learners and learning about our history, learning about our community, black history is American history and treating it as such. And so that's why I really appreciate the work that they do, and I just really appreciate the presentation today. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilman Austin?
Thank you. And I'd just like to just express my appreciation to Errol, Derrick Simpson, the entire board of the African-American Cultural Center for coming today and sharing that information about our history, but also understanding that, you know, we're celebrating black history, but it's also, it's our history, it's our culture, it's our community that really binds us. And for those of our allies and friends, right, this Cultural Center is a great opportunity for you to learn about your neighbors, about the folks. I mean, it's something to learn even for me every day that I go to or every exhibit that I attend. And so for Joanie, Dr. Rix, to learn something when she goes and when I go, it's open to the entire community, and I think we're all better off if we recognize, understand each other's history, each other's culture, but also support one another in terms of where we are going in our future. Our leadership for the Cultural Center is thoughtful and passionate and resilient and very proud of the work that you all are doing and will continue to do to expand on the foundation that we have here in the city of Long Beach. So thank you so much.
All right, and I'll just add some final comments. Want to congratulate and thank both council members, Rixody and Austin, on organizing today's festival outside or program outside as well as this presentation today. I think it's important that we recognize cultural centers because cultural context is key for everybody's background. It's important to just understand your identity, know thyself. And particularly in the black community, when you hear, when we talk about history and culture, it's important to acknowledge that, you know, a lot of our history and culture was taken away during, during the transatlantic slave trade. We weren't allowed to understand and know our roots and our history, and it takes real effort. It takes real effort to go back, follow your lineage, understand the disconnect between, you know, the African-based culture and what we do today in a Eurocentric society. And so it's important that we stand up and acknowledge culture, and you name it, and you call it out, that you have things like, you know, an African-American Cultural Center and a Black History Month. You know, it's important if we believe that we're Long Beach and we believe in belonging, that, you know, you're a city that everyone should feel like we have your back and everyone should feel like your city is somewhere that you belong, no matter your background, no matter your documentation status, no matter, you know, how you got here, no matter who you love, how you pray. All of those things, Long Beach, one thing that we know and understand is that we are a city that believes in belonging. And so we have to be intentional about calling those things out. And so this, this Black History Month, you know, I know it's special and it's different. I, you know, I understand that, you know, we never had a black person in this chair and in this role in our city, but I use this, I'm using this moment to think about, you know, all the, all the folks who came before, you know, Clarence Smith, Jim Wilson, Doris Topsey Elver, Laura Richardson, Steve Neal, Al Austin, Joanie Rixody, all the leaders and school board members and college board members that helped pave the way. I also know that it's important that we understand our role as allies in a broader tapestry of Long Beach. It's important that every one of our communities be recognized and feel uplifted and see that the city has their back too, that our city can work in a way where everyone can have the opportunity to thrive. And I truly believe that. So thank you so much, Councilman Austin and Councilmember Rixody, for that. And let's hear it again for the African-American Cultural Center. All right. Okay, let's go on with our council meeting. We're going to take up the homeless declaration emergency report first. Item 22, please.
Report from City Manager. Recommendation to continue the local emergency caused by conditions of homelessness within the city of Long Beach and receive and file an update on the emergency declaration citywide.
Thank you. Tom, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is our third report to council. We're coming back every two weeks at this point, so we will give you an update from the past two weeks, answer some of the questions, and do a look ahead for the next two weeks. I will turn it over to Kelly Collopy and Eric Lopez, our co-directors of our emergency response.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. It's good to be back with you again to share updates on our homeless emergency. First of all, as a reminder, our mission statement is to reduce the number of persons experiencing homelessness in the city and in the region by increasing housing opportunities and really enhancing initiatives as well as maintaining safety and security of people experiencing homelessness and our general public and our community. First, I'd like to share some of the existing efforts that are taking place. So the homeless, sorry, the mobile access vehicle. So the MAC is currently at the corner of East Sixth Street and Long Beach Boulevard. It's also at the Promenade and Billie Jean King Library, and it rotates through those different sites. We are planning for future locations outside of Long Beach to be deployed beginning in March, and those will be located in North and East Long Beach based on data that we have at Homeless Services. We also received new staff members, including one public health nurse, two case managers, and five outreach workers. We have selected the firm to design, build, and install the modular non-congregate shelter facilities, or otherwise known as tiny homes, for people experiencing homelessness that will be installed at the MSC to be able to provide interim temporary housing for people experiencing homelessness. We've launched our Community Partnerships Interest Forum. So this is a place where community members, community partners can sign up and indicate what they would like to do to offer supports. So so far, we've had 20 responses, and they're willing to contribute food, clothing, do job training, do some community outreach, education, and other possible service opportunities. So people can sign up for that, and then we'll reach back out and determine all across our city how we can be partnering. We've also expanded locations across the city where people can donate items for people experiencing homelessness. People can now, there are bins available at all of our city libraries, at the Boys and Girls Club at 3635 Long Beach Boulevard. Donations should be dropped off during operating hours so that they can be collected. And then we have also developed a website where nonprofit organizations can request items. Similar to COVID, when people needed masks and other items, we're doing the same thing for those donations and others to be able to support nonprofits who are serving people experiencing We've announced a mayoral community forum with local housing providers. It will be this, it'll be tomorrow from 12 to 1:30 at the Housing Authority on 1500 Hughes Way. We'll be sharing details about the city's monetary incentives to encourage new owners, landlords, and other housing providers to lease up, both using the Housing Choice voucher program and the Emergency Housing voucher program. We are also planning for five citywide convenings in March 2023, in March, for community partner roundtables, and we have begun asset mapping, so really looking at after-hours bed availability, mental health supports, and other shelter resources across the city. We held our fifth livestream update with the mayor and our police chief, Wally Hibish, and then actually today, we had another one that included our Eric Lopez, our Public Works Director, and Brent Dennis, our Parks Director. We launched the Housing Authority Information Line as well. So far, we've received 242 calls and sent 137 emails in the first five days of service. We shared a list of resources available to- We shared a list of resources available to the community for addressing issues related to homelessness. All of this can be found at longbeach.gov/homlessness. We've designed a notification system, or we are designing a notification system, so people experiencing homelessness are aware of when service opportunities are available. This will be an opt-in opportunity, and people will be able to receive those messages. And we're also, we're testing their initial data dashboard. We have approved 13 million in one-time funds to support homelessness emergency response, finalized letters in support of state and federal proposals, met with the state legislative budget staff to review options for additional direct funding to large cities for homelessness. We've engaged with the County of Los Angeles on their plans for Measure H and had a really great conversation there, as well as meeting with Senator Lina Gonzalez's office to discuss potential, sorry, solutions for H-HAP, and then created a list of potential grants and funds to pursue going forward. Under intergovernmental efforts, we met with LA County Supervisor Han to discuss county support for Long Beach homelessness efforts. That took place last Friday. We set up meetings with LA County leadership and regional partners through the Gateway Cog to strategize regional investments. That took place last Wednesday. And we submitted two letters of support related to legislative bills related to homelessness, one that provides additional federal dollars to support local homeless efforts and affordable housing, and the other to streamline indefinitely the conversion of motels into transitional and interim housing. We've also held many meetings with regional partners such as LA County Metro, LA County, LA Metro, and regional cities to discuss other partnership opportunities to provide more resources and services. And really, our goal is to expand affordable housing, expand mental health resources, making distribution of county homeless funding more equitable with Measure H funds, co-locating and streamlining services with the city by dedicating staff to the multi-service center, county staff at the multi-service center, expanding LA Metro's Transit Ambassador Pilot Program, and supporting the development of overnight shelter capacity for those deboarding the train at the end of the line. I'll turn it over to Eric Lopez, who will respond to previous questions and talk about our future efforts.
Thank you, Kelly. So, at the previous meeting, there were some questions that we wanted to make sure we address and are being responsive to questions, and we look forward to getting more questions and continuing this process. The first question was, what type of resources is the city prioritizing when discussing Measure H funding with the county? The city is advocating, city staff is advocating that the county provide a more equitable share of Measure H funding to support our homelessness effort. This could include funding for eligible Measure H programs like sobering centers, different housing models, funding for different housing models, and additional beds within the area. The second questions are, what are the stakeholder outreach plans? The Community Engagement Working Group is one of our established working groups focused on engaging partners to assist people experiencing homelessness in the Long Beach community. This group is creating stakeholder outreach plans that identify potential partners who could offer program, services, supports for people experiencing homelessness, and creates a plan to reach out to them to encourage partnerships and aligning of their resources and programs. As we roll out our different programs and services, we are also working to communicate with the community on those resources. What are the current staffing needs to support the city's homelessness efforts? The biggest need is public health nurses, who are a critical part of the city's reach and MAC teams. Additional staffing related to case management and outreach have also been difficult to fill, but we have been able to bring on one additional public health nurse, two additional case managers, and five additional outreach workers in the past two-week period. So, we are making progress in our staffing needs. The last question, how can we organize safe parking programs to be a safe space for families and undocumented individuals who need services? A safe parking program that we are working on will allow anyone experiencing homelessness, including families and undocumented individuals via a referral system from the multi-service center. The safe parking site will include outreach workers and access to services along with referrals to county family services and hotel vouchers. So, that provides the response to the four questions. Now, I'll provide an update on some of the focus areas for us in the next two weeks. So, forthcoming actions include, we're working to complete the improvements and bring the Second Winter Shelter online. That's a big part of our effort. We expect the Second Winter Shelter to come online sometime next week. We continue to plan a drive-through donation drop-off event to support people experiencing homelessness. We're working on engaging clergy, the clergy work group, and continue implementation of the Stakeholder Outreach and Engagement Plan. We're working on the long-term schedule of locations and focus areas for the Mobile Access Center. We're working to identify emergency shelter locations to be in place after the winter shelter program ends. The winter shelter program at the current location, or at the new Silverado Park will end in May, and we're working on what comes next after that. Continue identifying partners who will offer after-hours beds, availability, mental health support, and shelter resources. In addition, we're working to finalize letters to state and federal partners outlining our request for support to address the homelessness emergencies. We're also working to launch the public-facing dashboard and are making good progress on it. We continue to staff up the Homeless Services Bureau to address case management and public health nursing needs. And we continue to explore implementing a change to the CDBG Security Deposit Program to now include rental assistance for households that cannot pay their rent due to emergency expenses. And we continue to research all grants with homelessness connections that the city has received in the last several fiscal years to identify if those grants are viable to pursue again. So, that concludes our staff report, and we're happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you so much for that report, and I'll just add, you know, I want to thank, you know, Tom, you've been doing pretty good in these meetings. This is the first time doing some of these Tag Team meetings. I'll tell you, our city manager's pretty good, and we had that meeting with the Gateway Cities Cog, you know, keeping it on the level with folks and saying, hey, Long Beach is doing its part, we need you guys to step up and do your part. So, it's been really good to see, you know, to see you flex a little bit in those meetings. And, you know, I want to just publicly acknowledge Supervisor Janice Han is really answering the call for us. The conversation's been very, very productive, and they're our most important partner as it relates to having the tools to really manage the homeless crisis effectively. Long Beach is an independent city in many ways. We have our own health department, all those things, but a lot of the funding mechanisms are countywide, and it's only through partnerships can we have the resources to, like, meet this challenge the way we need to. So, you know, Kelly, your team, you and Paul have done, have been doing an incredible job. You know, I'm seeing a difference, and I'm hearing a difference from some of the business owners in our downtown space. You know, I also want to just lift up the police department and their rapid action because people conflate the homelessness issue with some of the burglaries that we've seen, but, you know, our police department has, I clearly demonstrated, put forward more resources, they're being proactive in each division, you know, I've visited a number of those businesses with them, and, you know, we're really seeing a great effort on behalf of all of our departments to really address some of the crises that are coming up. And Eric, thanks for stepping up. I know Public Works isn't traditionally who would coincident command something, but I actually think it's refreshing to see we've got the expertise on how to really deal with homelessness comprehensively, but we also have Public Works who knows how to, like, build stuff and get things done and move quickly, so. And we don't want to operate in an emergency forever, so that's why it's important to have Public Works, you know, out being, you know, in a prominent role so that we can get done what we need to get done, to get to a place where we can just manage things better, build more capacity, mental health, public health, all of those things so we can manage this crisis better. I'll now take it back behind the rail. Councilman Austin?
I have nothing to comment.
Councilmember Rixody?
Oh, you all know I have lots of comments, but they're all great, thanks. I just had a couple of questions for Ms. Collopy and for Mr. Lopez. So, for the list of resources available to the community for addressing issues, is it possible to get that, like, to make that into some type of, like, quick reference guide or something like that? Because I'm wondering, because it's just kind of, it's a kind of a little bit longer document, right? So, I'm thinking about, like, if we wanted to share that with, like, community or, like, on social media, the idea popped into my mind because I literally went to the Starbucks around the corner, and they had, like, specific phone numbers of, like, the women's shelter and things like that, and I thought that was a nice way of just basically saying, like, here are the high-level things. So, it might be nice to have, like, a set kind of branding from the city related to that that we can all share. And then additionally, for the Housing Authority Information Line, I was really impressed with the fact that it said in, basically, in five days, they received 242 calls, sending out 137 emails in the first five days. And I just was hoping you could kind of describe a little bit about what that information line is for, and then kind of talk a little bit about the metrics and the follow-up that happens from those calls.
So, the line is being utilized, one, we have people calling out on it and people calling in for property owners who are interested in leasing up their properties with Housing Authority vouchers. They are taking those calls, and then, you know, they're counting them going forward to determine what it is. Our goal is to be able to lease up all of, you know, to, for all those who are carrying emergency housing vouchers, right, is to be able to lease them up, and then also to ensure that we have the capacity through our regular Housing Choice vouchers to be able to lease those up as well. So, that's our base, and so, we have about 200 people still with vouchers seeking housing, and we'd like to be able to meet that goal with the new landlords.
Wonderful. Yeah, I'd love to see some data when you get it about what proportion of those calls from property owners resulted in someone getting housed, because I think that's a great way of demonstrating the effectiveness of something like this. So, that's fantastic. For the meeting with Senator Lina Gonzalez's office, could you discuss just a little bit about the solutions that were talked about at that meeting?
I'm going to turn it over to Paul, as he was part of that conversation.
Come on down.
Good evening, council. So, we talked about just some of our local needs, what we're seeing, and really discussing the funding mechanisms that are currently from the state, what's working well, but also discussing equity within the distribution and some concerns around the way and the methodology that the state uses to award funding for large cities.
Okay. Could you expand on that just a little bit?
Sure. Really quickly, there are now 14 large cities within the state that receive a allocation directly from the state within the Homeless Housing Assistance Program. That funding is based on the overall count for the COC. Since we are our own COC as a city, we end up getting less per person than many other cities throughout the state, and so, we want them to look at that and ensuring that we have equity across the cities and the amount that we're getting per person to be served.
Okay, thank you for that. And then next, there was a section here that said there was continued evaluation of property citywide, both public and private, that could be temporarily used or acquired to further the support of the local emergency. Could staff just talk a little bit about what the criteria is for that evaluation?
So, I mean, we have started out looking at, you know, there are a lot of different opportunities to support people experiencing homelessness. So, you know, we're looking at whether it's a safe parking site, or whether it could be a safe RV site, or whether it makes sense for tiny homes, or whether it makes sense for some other use. And so, looking at all the different levels of each type of opportunity looks different depending on what the land is, right, in terms of the site, whether it has utilities or not, whether it has, like, all these different things. And so, we're taking the time to sit back and to look at that, to look what our needs are moving forward, and trying to identify which types of sites make the most sense, and then also, what are the types of sites that we could actually identify funding to be able to support going forward? So, it's got a whole lot of criteria that we're spending time looking at.
Okay, wonderful. And then, lastly, it says, began asset mapping of after-hours bed availability, mental health support, and shelter resources. And I know that we had a discussion a couple of weeks back about the fact that there was a challenge with some of the smaller providers and getting real-time access to their availability for beds. Does staff have some thoughts around how we might better get that information in real time, or any ideas from maybe those providers themselves?
Yeah, so, most of our providers sort of stop taking intakes after about 5:00. And so, what we're trying to identify is those that are willing, or that already are or are willing, to be able to provide the after-hours access. For instance, the Behavioral Urgent Care Center on Long Beach Boulevard, it's open 24 hours. It is an intake for mental health crisis, right? So, then they would be able to identify and make other connections. I think there may be some substance use providers who are willing to take folks during different hours. And so, one is the smaller providers, they may or may not be open, and may or may not be willing to be open, and then if they are coming in, how are we connecting them to other services?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Carr?
Yes, thank you, staff, for the continued updates. This is just a practical question. You talked about safe parking and getting referrals from the MSC for those folks. Would there be specific outreach to known areas where we know folks are living in their cars, who may not be able to get over to the multi-service center, to make sure that the folks that we know are already out there in cars have access to that space quickly?
Yeah, so outreach workers, you know, certainly will be doing that level of outreach, and then through the Mobile Access Center, we're bringing those services to people, so people will be able to register through those opportunities as well.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Rixody?
I have a few more questions. For the question you answered, Director Lopez, about the safe parking programs and their availability to families and undocumented individuals, the answer that was given, I think, was more on the side of services, but not necessarily, I think, answering the question around safety. And the reason I bring that up is that we've had some folks, like, contact our offices that are women or women and children, who have shared their reluctance to go to shelters because of safety-related issues, and so, I was just hoping you could kind of talk about the safe parking program and how those could be considered safer for families.
So, on our existing safe parking site, we have security available. With any expanded sites, we will make sure that there is security to cover the full location, putting in cameras just to not monitor people, but in case something happens, that we're able to address it, bringing in lighting to ensure that there's proper lighting. So, these are all things that we're putting in place to ensure that the lots are safe and that anybody going in can feel that they can close their eyes and not worry about what's happening around them.
Okay, that's great. I think it's important for people to know that there's going to be security on site. And then the last two things was, one is, I know for the next two weeks, the plan is to continue to staff up the Homeless Services Bureau to address case management, public health nursing needs, et cetera, and I just wanted to kind of just lift up our health department and just all the work that you all do, because I think one thing that we forget, coming out of the COVID-19 emergency and then now going into the homelessness emergency declaration, is that we forget that the health department has not stopped doing all of the other things that it normally does, right? All the STD control programs and nutrition services and violence prevention and fatherhood programs and lack of health, and I mean, I could, like, list on and on and on. So, when we talk about the importance of staffing up, like, that's something that was kind of glaring in the report, and I just really wanted to lift that up. And then the last thing was, the comment about researching all grants with homelessness connections that the city has received in the last several fiscal years to identify if those grants are viable to pursue again, and I just wanted to say thank you for, because it's, like, leave no stone unturned approach, I think is something that I personally really appreciated, so, well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Duggan?
I just want to say thank you to the whole city team for providing this report tonight, and the steps that the city's taking during the state of emergency is huge for you to give us these reports and all the work that you're doing. We're following this item closely. I've always brought up the metrics and goals. I just want to understand, I know we're still working on the dashboard, and that will display a lot of the data around the state of emergency, but I wanted to see if I could get an updated date for when we can expect the point-in-time count report to be public. Thank you.
We are working on analysis of the data that we have in right now, cleaning up everything. We are confident, still with the timeline that we put out, mid-April, we should have a report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Tarrell?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to just add thanks for the regular update, and then coming back with questions we had last council meeting and answering them today. I wanted to ask about, how do we maybe utilize the GoLongBeach app? I'm just wondering if there's thought about, given our, you know, training, and I think also encouraging residents to use, how that could be used to provide resources for residents so they know, okay, this is resource for safe parking, you know, what do we do when X happens, so then it's just right there in an app versus going online and searching for a website with a list of places to call? Thank you.
All right, that satisfies councilmember comments. Oh, did you have a response to that?
Looked at GoLongBeach in the past as, you know, one, people were interested in being able to report things out, like, but we were very concerned about people maybe
like, but we were very concerned about people maybe taking pictures or doing things like that of encampments and others and sending them. It often violates the privacy of people who are living there. So we've been, you know, we have, we have thought about that. Had not thought about Go Long Beach as a way to provide the, you know, to provide opportunities. As you mentioned, we are creating a text directly to people who are experiencing homelessness, a system to be able to notify them of where, you know, where the services will be and what's going on. But we can certainly look at it as one of the ways of sharing information.
And one of the features of Go Long Beach is a resource library. So it's a, there's questions on how do I access these services? It's not a digital access to the services, but it answers those questions. And so we have a lot of those on our homelessness website. We can certainly look at adding some of those to the Go Long Beach to better get cross-functionality there.
Thank you. Councilmember Supranah.
Yeah, I just have one question. This might be directed to Paul. It just came up this weekend, so you don't work exclusively within the city of Long Beach. Now, I know the Met units for the Police Department always called on Signal Hill because there's a county clinician on board. Do you have the same type of rules?
We do partner closely with Signal Hill because people literally cross right over, and we're constantly also right at the edge of Long Beach. And we do see people move back and forth. So we do not go into other cities, but we do work closely, especially with Signal Hill, and making sure that we're collaborating and working together.
And the follow-up would be, that would also include county easements and Caltrans easements?
Correct. We have agreements both with the county and the state to go on to county flood control and Caltrans property for outreach and engagement purposes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you. I'll just, just also, I think it would be good for the public to sort of understand, sure, we're doing the data dashboard, and, you know, you'll be able to see our progress, not just since the beginning of the emergency, but since we, we're going to go back probably two years or so on the data. I think that's important. But I think it's also important for people to understand what kind of capacity we need to make, we need to make progress on in order to manage this crisis a bit better. And we've had a lot of discussions about that with the county recently. So Kelly, if you could just talk a little bit about some of the context around the support the hospitals need with recuperative care, substance use support, step-down facilities. What all do we need to do in order to sort of control our own fate as it relates to, you know, managing this crisis better?
That's a big question, Mayor. So, the, I mean, I'll start, and I'll have, you know, Paul jump in. The, so, we, you know, homelessness, there's a lot of focus around housing, but there's also a lot of focus around mental health services, and substance use services, and social supports, and other access. And, you know, we've been doing a lot of work around mental health. We were bringing a report back in April from the mental health consultants that we've been working with, with new recommendations there. So that'll be coming forth. And then, you know, as part of this emergency, we can include some of those recommendations as well. But some of the key things that we have been looking at are, one, for hospitals, they can often medically clear people, but what they don't have is a place for people to step down if they have mental health concerns or others. So what does it look like for recuperative care and step-down beds from there? Currently, we have one recuperative care site within the city of Long Beach, and it's pretty much always full.
Explain to the public what recuperative care is.
Recuperative care. So it's essentially a place where people, you know, they're, they can have some medical service there. They can have other kinds of, it's where they recuperate from something that they would not be able to do well on the streets. And we've talked to a couple of providers. Do you want to add to that definition?
Yeah. So somebody's recovering from, say, a surgery, or some acute, or maybe even chronic health condition that needs some specialized care, and a setting that is conducive to that. Our recuperative cares are a little more service-enriched. They have nursing staff, they have medication management, so really a little more hands-on in addressing medical needs.
And then we're also working to identify other levels of mental health services for people like residential and others. There's just not enough across LA County to serve the need. So trying to figure out what those possibilities can be. A new site has just opened at MLK Hospital. It's beautiful. It's filling up quickly, too. And so we're looking at what is the, and what is the integration? Because, you know, often people have co-occurring mental health and substance use need. And how do we start to address that? So there's just a lot of the different pieces, and it's a pretty, it's an extensive list of, you know, like the continuum, the coordination, all the step downs to be able to serve people so that they can, you know, successfully be housed going forward.
And I think that's important. Before we go to public comment and wrap this up, I think it's important for people to understand, it's not just about building shelters. We need capacity, but what happens beyond that? How do we build capacity around substance use? How do we build support for our medical ecosystem in the city? We had more than 100 people die who were experiencing homelessness last year. If we had recuperative care, someone who just had an operation that wasn't prepared to go back on the street, if they had recuperative care, perhaps they could have lived a little bit longer. So we have gaps that we, as a city of our size, city larger than Cincinnati, larger than St. Louis, larger than Miami, we shouldn't be dependent on sending folks to East LA, or out to the Valley, or to South Central to get services. We should be able to have some of those services within our own communities so we can control our fate as it relates to managing this issue. Some of these things were state-run. State has sort of realigned a lot of this infrastructure to counties. But because we have our own Health Department, we have to request that support ourselves and locate those in our own communities so that we can, we can manage it and we can control it. So what the future looks like, it's really, to come out of the emergency, we have to build a more robust infrastructure to deal with all of those gaps that are missing, from substance use, recuperative care, shelter is one part of it. We also, we know that the winter shelter, every year, we declare an emergency. This is, is the first time we declared an emergency. We just declare an emergency every single year to place the winter shelter, every winter. If we had a facility, a permanent facility, then we know, and we can plan for it, and not disrupt the community every single year. That's the kind of critical infrastructure that we have to simultaneously work on right now in our city. And I think we just haven't taken enough time to explain these things to the public. So these 11:00 on Tuesday updates, these every-two-week council briefings is for the council to ask these questions and get into the discussion right at the beginning of the council meeting. It's a reason why we put this right at the beginning, because it's our top priority for these next few months. So thank you so much. We have one member of the public signed up for public comment, Sanaa Kinfe.
Sanaa Kinfe, Sixth District resident. I want to start with the positive, because I'm learning a lot about myself during this 100-day fast that I've been dealing with, and March is going to end. But I really enjoyed today's broadcast where the mayor referenced that we're not getting our equitable share of Measure H money. I think that that's an understatement, to say the least. I think you referenced $25 or $28 million. Hopefully, we can get more of the money, because we are, as a city, comparative to our size, like you said, St. Louis and Miami, we're doing a lion's share of the work of eradicating homelessness. And a lot of the Gateway Cities and City of Los Angeles honestly is not carrying the load. Some of the things that I had to question, and I'm not personifying this towards anyone, just towards the city as a whole. Okay. There was just a reference that we have to make in a state of emergency every year for the winter shelter, because we don't have a year-round shelter. We did have a year-round shelter. It was the Atlantic Farm, the Bridge Community Shelter. And, you know, I'm familiar, I don't know, you know, the public, how it allated itself in the public, that we weren't, why we weren't able to use it in its full capacity, and during COVID and all the situation towards that. And I guess my question today is like, now that we've partnered with COA, Christians in Action people, my question would be, how are we, how many of those beds are going to Long Beach residents? Because to my understanding, and I'm glad Mr. Duncan is here, maybe he can talk to us about it, his past experience with LASSA. But, you know, LASSA's claiming a lot of these beds, and they're not claiming it, just as the mayor just said, that we shouldn't be having to send people to East LA and South Central for services. We shouldn't allow East LA and South Central to send people here, because we would never be allowed to send people from here out those ways. And so I'm just curious, like, if we keep developing shelters and space, what to the 3,000-plus people that are homeless in Long Beach, how many of them are we going to be able to place in these spaces? Like, I don't know if people caught it in the broadcast earlier, but essentially, our city council, as well as our county supervisor, they want to redevelop the Carmelitos and use some of the open space of the Carmelitos to house homeless people. Okay, if we, as a community, decide to do that, how many of those homeless people are going to come from Long Beach? Are we just going to start picking up people from random parts of the county of Los Angeles and shipping them down here? Because it seems like that's what Long Beach is being utilized for, and that's not appropriate to the residents, as we can see with what's happened in Silverado Park. What's happening in Silverado Park is, I don't know how many people are homeless in Long Beach that are going to be housed in Silverado Park, and you guys don't even aggregate the data to tell us. That's a problem. It's not fair to the community.
All right. Thank you. So before we go to a vote, I am going to just ask. So first, the point on Carmelitos, there's no proposal for homeless housing at Carmelitos. The discussion, Carmelitos is county property, and a number of the public, and it's actually the first public housing development LA County history. So it's sort of notable. But you've seen that there are a number of public housing developments that have gone through significant redevelopment in recent years, Jordan Downs, others. And so if the county looks at the Carmelitos, the city will have an opportunity to look at, like, what the, what the plan would be if that, if that were to come fruition. But you're talking years and years out. But I will go to Tom or Kelly. If we could just, so I think people, if we could just spend a word about our own intake system? Because there's a lot of talk at the Gateway Cities Call also about like the benefit of having our own intake system, as opposed to going into LASSA's system. If you could just explain that a little bit, I think that would be helpful, so people understand the distinction there.
Sure. So LASSA has what's called the Coordinated Entry System. We have the same thing. It's a requirement to receive funding, and that's really about how you screen and prioritize people for housing services. We do operate our own system that we screen people into. So for most of our programs, it's required that you come through the Long Beach Coordinated Entry System, where we are screening people and then referring out to things like the Atlantic Bridge Community for winter shelter. It is a county-funded program, so we can't be restrictive to only Long Beach. That being said, we've worked pretty hard to ensure that most of the people getting referred into winter shelter have been here in Long Beach. I would say, we could safely say that over 80% of the people currently staying within Community Hospital were referred through Long Beach. There is some difficulty with, as we look at our full portfolio, as we said, we don't have many recuperative care beds. We want to make sure that we are able to access those for people that are in need. So having some regional flexibility and partnership makes sense. But as we look at things like permanent housing as it's developed, that is supportive in nature, we've had conversations with the county around projects that they've supported, and ensuring that the referrals do come through the Long Beach Coordinated Entry System. So the county has been supportive when we look project by project, especially for those that are permanent supportive housing.
And I just want to underscore how important it is and how unique it is that we have our own system. So almost nobody has it in LA County, all the other cities. If you're not a Continuum of Care, if you have an outreach worker that your city is paying for, you have to go through the county system to go for referral services. And so having that all here in a multi-service center with our 27 outreach workers that can connect into our Continuum of Care, it's a huge advantage. Even when we have the county come in and do winter services, winter shelter services, most of those, as Paul said, are going to be Long Beach residents, or at least people that we're interacting with through our Continuum of Care, and that's a huge benefit.
And that, I think that's really, really important, that we are able to talk with our community about this. We're talking about homelessness more than we ever have. The fact we have our own coordinated entry system is a benefit. When we met with the mayors to the north of us, they're restrict, they're, many of them are resistant to actually accepting services from the county, because they believe that they're going to get homeless from, you know, whatever, all across the county, land in their communities. And we met with them and said, hey, Long Beach created this own coordinated entry system. Perhaps the Gateway Cities can be a bigger part of it by creating their own, you know, coordinated entryway system. We're able to target, because our goal is to address the crisis in our local community. We can be a part of what's happening across the region, but the more we have local outreach, the more we have our own coordinated entry system, the more we can manage our local crisis better. And so that's, it's a really important distinction. And to the, certainly to the extent of, you know, the funding has requirements, and there are legal requirements on what the barriers to entry can be, we're doing everything we can to prioritize Long Beach. And I think, Paul, with the results that you've been able to show, and I've heard this number, and we got to figure out how you can, you know, add some of this to the transparency, but I've heard that number when I've visited the winter shelter at Community Hospital also, that is 80 and above of the individuals that have ended up in the winter shelter at Community Hospital have been from Long Beach or connected to our Long Beach, you know, point of entry, right? So outreach worker found them in Long Beach and connected to the system. I think that's important. We have to make sure we build public support for addressing this crisis. So we have to tell the story and explain what our strategies are. Thank you so much. Members, please cast your vote so we can move on.
Motion is carried. 8-0.
Thank you. It's okay. We spent a little bit of time on that. I think that's okay. It's an important issue for our community. Let's take on consent, items 1 through 7 and 16. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there a public comment on consent? Seeing numbers, please cast your vote.
Motion is carried. 8-0.
Thank you. We'll go to hearing number eight, please.
Report from Development Services, recommendation to receive supporting documentation into the record. Conclude the public hearing and consider the applicant's appeal by SM Car Wash. Adopt a resolution adopting and certifying a mitigated negative declaration. Declare the ordinance amending the land use district map read the first time and laid over the next regular meeting of the city council for final reading. And deny the appeal of the Planning Commission's decision and deny a conditional use permit for a new detached automated car wash located at 1911 East Pacific Coast Highway, District 6. This does require an oath.
Before we do that, we're going to go to Councilmember Exode.
I need to recuse myself, because I was on Planning Commission when this item came before that.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Let's go ahead with the oath, please.
All those participating and giving testimony, if you can rise and raise your right hand. Do you and each of you solemnly state that the testimony you may give in the cause now and pending before this body shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We'll hand it over to staff.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is an appeal hearing, and we'll have our planning manager, Allison Spindler Ruiz, to make the staff presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm here this evening to present to you an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to deny a proposed car wash at the site addressed at 1,911 East Pacific Coast Highway. So a little bit of background, on November 3rd of last year, the Planning Commission held a duly noticed public hearing on the proposed project, at which the commission recommended that the city council approve a zone change. However, the commission denied the request for a conditional use permit, or CUP, for a proposed car wash at this location. Within the 10-day appeal period, and an applicant appeal was filed appealing the denial of the CUP. The appellant asserted concern that the Planning Commission erred in its determination that the project conflicts with the city's general plan policies, including environmental justice policies, that it erred in its understanding of an over-concentration of car washes and other auto-oriented uses in this location and vicinity, and a determining that a residential use was potentially feasible on the site. I will walk you through this decision made by the Planning Commission, and it is up to the city council regarding a policy decision on this matter and the associated findings needed for this project. So a little bit of background, the site here. The site here is about half, half an acre with existing zoning, a split zoning, which I'll get to in a minute. The slide also tells you the general plan place type, which is neighborhood serving center or corridor moderate. And there's an existing restaurant on the site, Los Potros, which is a 3,296-square-foot restaurant with an associated paved parking lot on the, on the site. You can see here a little bit more of the vicinity of the project, which is located, again, along East Pacific Coast Highway, near the corner of Cherry Avenue to the east and Gardenia Avenue to the west. You can see the nearby land uses, including residential uses directly north of the site, as well as southwest of the site, shown on the slide. The Planning Commission did approve, made recommendation to the council to approve a zone change, which would change the zoning for the northern portion of the location of the site, if you can see here on the map, for that area to be modified from an R3S residential zone to a community commercial or CCN zone, and I'll get into that in just a moment. So, in terms of a little bit more detail of the proposed project, the applicant proposes the demolition of an existing restaurant building, the one I mentioned, as well as a surface parking lot to construct a new one-story car wash building equipped with a standard car wash tunnel equipment. In addition to the 100-foot car wash tunnel, the building includes an area for mechanical and electric equipment and storage. And you can see on the slide, a drive-through lane would be constructed to direct vehicles entering the site from a new driveway along Gardenia Avenue, along the northern property line to a pay station, then southerly to enter the car wash tunnel, as shown here on the slide. Vehicles would exit the southerly end of the car wash building and exit the site via an unnamed alley, or through a new driveway on East Pacific Coast Highway. Vehicles would also have the option to park in one of 18 self-service vacuum spaces equipped with one vacuums per space. A new six-and-a-half-foot decorative masonry wall would be constructed along the northerly property line. And the proposed site improvements would also include landscaping along the property perimeter, where there is no landscaping on the site today. The other building on site located near the southwest corner of the property contains the vacuum room and a restroom, and the proposed car wash would operate from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM daily. Site improvements would include new lighting, security measures, in addition to a 24-hour security company to monitor the site. The proposed project would, again, redevelop the site with a contemporary car wash building and new landscaping along the perimeter, and would be a marked improvement over the aging building of the existing site where there is no landscaping today. The, the slide here shows you some elevations and renderings to get a sense of what the site could look like in the future. So, why do we need a conditional use permit in this case? A CUP is required for certain cases of unique uses, such as car washes, for which by nature of their operation intensity may not inherently be compatible at every site or location, and therefore requires an individual review to determine if the use can be made compatible with adjacent uses through conditions, or if it should be permitted. In order to determine if a use should be approved, there are four required findings, shown here on the slide, all of which would must be made affirmatively in order for, for us to approve the project. And those findings relate to consistency with the general plan and zoning, ensuring that there is no detrimental impact to the surrounding community, including for the topics listed here, ensuring the compliance with special conditions and green building standards. So, for the first finding related to general plan policies, one of the major policies that was part of staff's analysis and, and recommendation for the denial made to Planning Commission was related to the proposed use in the broader context. So, the proposed use, again, is adjacent to residential units classified as sensitive receptors. The project site is located within an area documented to be highly pollution burden, as shown here on the map, which shows the California Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessments, CAL, EnviroScreen, which looks cumulatively at environmental health and socioeconomic information. And as shown, the site is in red because it's in the 90th percentile or above for cumulative burden. This is an important policy, but it's one of many policies in the general plan. And as shown on the slide here, 16-1 is to identify areas and populations of the city exposed to unsafe levels of pollutants, and to make decisions with that in mind. Another one that was looked at for this case is shown here on the slide, related to concentration of uses. And again, is something to be considered as part of the broader decision, although it should be noted that under SB 1000 and state regulations related to environmental justice, that decision-makers are not suggested to deny a project only because of what's already in the surrounding community, but rather to consider it as one part of a larger context. There are several other general plan policies and strategies, shown here on the slide, that were part of staff's analysis, that found the car wash location to not be consistent with our general plan, including the land use element, as described in a little bit more detail above, and relating as well to the issues around buffering and adjacent residential. So, I talked a little bit already about existing site conditions. You can see a photo of the existing site here on the slide. There are existing conditions relating to blight and issues related to the unhoused population, as well as crime. Okay, I think we've got a, a point about calls for service as the next part of the slide here, which shows that we did have seven calls for service from January to November 2022 for some serious issues, as you can see here on the slide. And that's part of a broader issue of 61 calls for service since January of 2020. And I understand that the police department is also here and could speak to this further if necessary. And then finally, I also wanted to point out, code enforcement cases were pulled for both addresses associated with the site. And we did find issues related to graffiti, assembly uses, including one related to a COVID-19 violation, and one related to signage. So, again, there is a consideration of trade-offs between the proposed car wash use and the existing on the conditions on the site, which foreseeably would and could remain, should this permit not be issued. So, since the Planning Commission hearing, staff received over 20 public comments, and now up to 33 public comments opposing this project leading up to today's decision. And public comments did relate to issues around the general plan, the over-concentration of auto-oriented uses, such as car washes, and concerns by the community related to increases in traffic and the need for more affordable housing. And again, just to summarize, the Planning Commission did not see grounds to make findings in the affirmative for the reasons shown here on this slide. However, again, these are policy issues, and I also wanted to point out they're not issues related to the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA. Again, the, two of the required findings here, shown on the slide, explain why these are policy issues in our realm, both related to the general plan and concerning potential negative impacts to public health, safety, and welfare. However, there was an analysis under California Environmental Quality Act. An initial study and mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the project and was circulated in June of 2022. The IS MND found that by implementing identified mitigation measures for air quality, cultural resources, energy, greenhouse gas emissions, noise, transportation, and tribal cultural resources, the project would not result in significant effects on the environment under CEQA. Again, as mentioned, the applicant appeal was filed within the 10-day appeal period, and the appeal seeks approval for the requested CUP for the car wash. The applicant is asking the city council to overturn the Planning Commission's decision. And here are some of the reasons on the slide. The applicant believes that the commission and staff erred in its interpretation of an application of general plan policies. The appellant, who's also the applicant, believes there's no over-concentration and that existing car washes are not compatible in quality or technology, and that the Planning Commission erred in determining that a residential use was potentially feasible as well. So, this case, similar to other CUP applications for car washes, requires a careful balancing by the city council without a clear-cut or predetermined answer. The city council should consider the environmental burden of placing another auto-oriented use on the site, considering concentration, while also looking at other policies and priorities of the general plan, including related to jobs and economic development, and not allowing for under-utilization of sites. And therefore, there should be some consideration, for example, that the project will have some employment and fiscal benefits, that in the short and medium term, no other superior project is likely in this location, and that the denial of this request could result in continued disrepair of the site and the surrounding area. The city council, in its adjudicatory capacity, is tasked with reviewing this appeal de novo and can, and can take action to deny the project, approve or conditionally approve the project as a whole or in part, in accordance with the municipal code. No single project can implement all the goals and policies of the general plan, so careful consideration is recommended to consider whether there are merits of the appeal and the policy trade-offs inherent in this application, as there are a variety of policies and considerations appropriate from the general plan in this case. Upholding the commission's denial could result, again, in the continuation of the existing restaurant and issues here on the site. So, with all of that, staff's recommendation is summarized here on the slide, including related to adopting a resolution and certifying the mitigated negative declaration, declaring ordinance to support the zone change, and staff's recommendation regarding denying the appeal. Should the council choose to overturn this action, staff would need to come back related to findings and conditions for the CUP. With that, staff's available to answer any questions, and I understand that the applicant, who's also the appellant, is here to make a presentation as well.
Thank you. We hear from the appellant. Madam City Attorney, what's the guidance here?
I believe that we were asked for 12 minutes, which did not require, in total, which would include any rebuttal.
Okay, so that, we would have to split that between six and six?
No, that would be 12 minutes per side. And then there would be the ability to allocate any time that they'd like to rebuttal our understanding from communications.
And the rebuttal would be from whom, staff?
Rebuttal would be for the appellant to set aside additional time after the staff questions. My understanding is that there was no desire to save time for rebuttal.
Okay, so you have 12 minutes.
Great, thank you. I'm Francis Park, and my law firm, Park &amp; Velios, represents the applicant. I am a land use attorney with over 28 years of experience and an expert in CEQA. I want to thank city staff for their hard work, in particular Christopher Kuntz and Alex Mulro. They've been professional and a pleasure to work with. Next slide, please. In support of our appeal, we submitted a legal letter dated February 2nd. That letter provided a comprehensive set of findings, 20 pages, that demonstrates that there is ample legal justification for you to approve the CUP and all related approvals. I wanted to highlight one item of disagreement, though. In the staff report, there is a table that attempts to show project inconsistencies with three general plan policies. However, that table is simply incorrect and is directly contrary to city staff's conclusions in the MND that was published by the city for a 30-day comment period and adopted by the Planning Commission. In the land use section of that MND, the project is noted as consistent with all applicable general plan policies. That conclusion of consistency is further bolstered by the legal findings attached to our letter. There is no technical evidence to the contrary. In addition, at the commission, the sole stated reason by commissioners for the denial was that there was a sense of over-concentration of this use, in their opinion. That is not technically the legal CUP standard, but regardless, we can address that. Also, the commission received some testimony during public comments stating a preference for a residential use at the site, which our experts will testify later, is not viable today. But our team can address both issues. First, let me tell you why we're trying to make this important investment. Next slide. The site currently contains a building from 1967, over 56 years old, with a dilapidated parking lot that services a nightclub, bar, and live entertainment that stays open until 2:00 AM or later. There is no lighting, poor maintenance, potholes, and a huge junk pile. In addition, this existing use and site has generated 43 police service calls in the last six years alone. The current site is noisy, dark, unkempt, riddled with crime, and it has been this way for 30-plus years. These are not my opinions, but facts taken directly from the technical report prepared by Dr. Robert Kleinhans, a principal researcher for the city's Economic Blueprint, and Pat West, your former city manager. Pat will speak after me and elaborate on their findings, but the main takeaway is that the site is extremely blighted, and this existing business is not enhancing the site today. Next slide. In contrast, this project would immediately remove the existing business and significantly improve the area by investing $7.5 million into a clean, safe, and primarily daytime, commercial use. The project would activate the entirety of the site and add attractive landscaping and site lighting. A professional security firm would also provide 24-hour security. Next slide. In this way, we believe that this project would not only be an aesthetic and public safety improvement, but also a catalyst for future investment to help combat the blighted conditions. Moreover, even your staff admits that the project would immediately improve the aesthetics of the site. Next slide. Let me return to the issue of the number of car wash uses. Yes, there are other car washes in Long Beach, no doubt. However, to be clear, the other car wash examples are old, outdated, not environmentally friendly, and have little to no aesthetic appeal. Here are two such examples in your city. Not every car wash is the same, and we are asking you to consider this project on the individual merits. Next slide. For example, if we look at water usage, the car washes in that example photo use somewhere between 100 to 140 gallons of water per car. In contrast, this project uses as little as 2.1 quart in net gallons per wash, with a state-of-the-art reclaimed water system that captures up to 85% of the water. In addition, no car wash in the area is of the level of quality of this project. Others are not built to green building standards or sustainable, and none provide the amount of landscaping, safety improvements, and water-saving technology. When you stack up the benefits, it is no comparison, and I would venture to guess that those other car washes are not viable in the long term, and I would argue that they are much better candidates to consider for residential redevelopment in the near future. Next slide. This slide shows a before and after with our project. As I hope you agree, this project is a vast improvement of a currently blighted site and will be a catalyst for more investment in the future. I urge you to vote in support. I will now turn it over to two other team members, Pat West and Alex Sharon, to speak about the economic and community benefits of the project, as well as our outreach efforts. Thank you. Pat?
Thank you, Francis. Hi, everybody. Pat West here. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Good evening, City Management Team, Tom Modica, Linda Tatum. Good evening, City Attorney McIntosh. So, to understand this section of Pacific Coast Highway, let me take us back 30 years, to 1992. This was the year of the Rodney King Civil Unrest, and Central Long Beach was ground zero for the city. So much so, that in the aftermath, the city council and the Redevelopment Agency formed CPAC, or the Central Project Area Committee, whose stated purpose was to use redevelopment tools and dollars to eliminate extremely blighted conditions, which many felt led to the much, led to much of the unrest in Central Long Beach in general. While many positive developments have occurred throughout Central Long Beach in the past years, this small part of PCH continues to suffer. There were high hopes, when approached by the Salvation Army, to turn Chittick Field into a new CROC Center. This was going to be the catalyst for the area, the catalyst for change. Unfortunately, the CROC Center never materialized. While the city was able later to use what was left of redevelopment dollars to improve Chittick Field, blight and deterioration continues on this corridor west of Signal Hill. It's been 30 years since the civil unrest of 1992. Before you tonight, there's a spark of new development for this corridor. Next slide, please. Staff requested the developer to pay for an economic and qualitative impact study for this project. The report found that this area is extremely blighted and has been for the past 30 years. The report concluded this project aligns with the Long Beach 10-year blueprint for economic development, adopted by the city council in 2018. Much of this blueprint was authored by Dr. Robert Kleinhans, who was an author on this economic development study, impact study. There are serious crime and public safety issues at the existing site. Between 2016 and 2022, there were 43 calls for service, which involved violent crimes, battery, assault, vandalism, robbery, vehicle theft, and even potential dead bodies. battery, assault, vandalism, robbery, vehicle theft, and even potential dead bodies. Most crimes were related to the existing use in the site, a nightclub, bar, and restaurant with live entertainment and dancing. The current site has received little or no investment in many years. Additionally, the required economic and qualitative impact report concluded the site is not viable for residential uses at this time. The site is in a heavily trafficked and commercial corridor that reduces residential potential with little development in recent years. Next slide. The economic impact study documents this project... Next slide, please. Thank you. The economic impact study documents this project will create 25 to 45 construction jobs, 10 car wash jobs, and up to 145 indirect jobs through many of the building trades. The study also states removal of light revitalizes business corridors. And again, this project aligns with the city's 10-year blueprint for economic development. Next slide, please. So here we have a before and after. You've seen this just a second ago. So here's a potential before and after photo of the site. As Ms. Spindler pointed out, the City Council Agenda Report before you tonight states, "No other or superior project is likely in this location. Denial of this request could result in continued disrepair of this site and blight in the surrounding community." The city staff report before you also states, "Upholding the denial could result in the continuation of the existing use and aging building for an unknown period of time." City staff writes, "No single project can implement all goals and policies of the general plan. The council should consider whether there are merits to this appeal." Staff also concludes, "The project before you tonight will not create any significant impacts or the need for additional mitigation measures." Thank you very much for your consideration. Now Alex Sharon.
Thank you, Pat. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I'll be quick, because I know we're running up against the 12 minutes. If I could get the next slide, please. I want to briefly talk about some of the outreach that this developer has done and the team has done for over a year. Not listed on the slide was our initial community outreach meeting that we held at Long Beach City College, which was attended by about 35 to 40 folks, some of whom are in the audience today. We've had a good dialogue with those who even opposed the project today, so I want to thank them for their engagement. However, it was very important to the developer to make sure that he invested in the community. He didn't want this to be a one-and-done project, and as a result, did a lot of listening to residents. As Pat mentioned, we have worked with the Pacific Gateway workforce to ensure that the employees at the existing Los Potreros restaurant will have a first shot at the jobs at the car wash. I think that was very important to the developer. We've also formalized a community benefits agreement with several community members and organizations, including the Transformational Living Homes, which has several sites in Long Beach One, proximate to this car wash, and the developers made a significant financial and operational investment into TLH and their operations for the next four years. Also, as mentioned by Mr. West, we are investing significantly in security and safety enhancements for the Chittick Field area. In fact, just yesterday, Pat West and I and members of TOA, which is a youth football program that programs, practices, and youth tutoring at Chittick Field five days a week, walked the site, and pleased to announce that we formalized a partnership with TOA to support their youth football programs at Chittick Field and to identify additional security and safety enhancements, including lighting, to make sure that the field remains active, as it's right next to that corridor in PCH that we're trying to improve. Additionally, we've had ongoing dialogue with the adjacent Buddhist temple to work out a parking agreement, so that we could provide overflow parking for the Buddhist temples' holidays and other events that require additional parking. I want to leave you with three thoughts. Number one, we're very proud of the commitment that we've made to the community, as evidenced by the ecomments that I think you've received, or the city clerk has received, from the TOA Foundation. Transitional Living Homes, I know, sent a detailed letter on what the commitment means to them in the next four years, and also other businesses throughout Long Beach. Number two, you will hear a lot of comments tonight about housing. I think the City Council received an ecomment from Waterford Housing and Sean Rossin, who is the single largest provider of affordable and middle-income housing programs in the city of Long Beach, who indicated that this site is not ripe for development for housing at this time. In fact, he cited specifically that more economic development would be needed before that happens. And third, just to finish, thank you, Mr. Mayor, to personalize this, when I would drive home from Long Beach Poly in 1988, I would go down Atlantic, turn left on PCH. The corridor looked exactly the same then as it does now. We appreciate your consideration and urge you to grant the appeal. Thank you very much.
On the hearings, we have to be way more strict on time and all those things, because these are legal proceedings. All right, so now we can go to public comment. We have 33 members of the public who signed up to speak. Let's set the clock at 90 seconds. I'm going to call up the first 10. Tanaz Malamit, Georgina Marokin, who's requesting Spanish, Bimardina Sanchez, who's requesting Spanish, Michelle Reyes, Alexander Reyes, Tom Sullivan, Brian, Maureen, Joshua Lopez, Jesse Franco, and Paulo. Tanaz?
Yes, I can begin.
Yes.
Good evening, Council, Mayor Richardson. Thank you very much for having me and taking the time. I'm going to be quick, since I only have 90 seconds. I urge you to please vote no on this project. As you've heard, not only has the Planning Commission and the staff rejected it, but it's important to note that you guys have declared a state of emergency on homelessness, and it is your perfect opportunity to use this as a way to alleviate the homelessness crisis. That's one point. Not only can you build affordable housing, which I know, you know, they're saying you can't do it, but I know you can eminent domain the property to not only build affordable housing, permanent supportive housing, and if not that, you can put tiny homes, interim housing sites, navigation center, safe parking, RV parking, safe storage. There's a number of ways you can use this property to really support and alleviate the homelessness crisis. It doesn't just have to be affordable housing. And not only that, but you guys have an opportunity here as having your own health department, which the other 87 cities, except for Pasadena, do not have. You have the opportunity to come in and use the site for healthcare services, health, you know, a clinic, a treatment facility, a wellness center. This is, you guys have heard, this is a health hazard, so you can do all these things to alleviate that. A car wash makes no sense. This is your opportunity to show the community that you can do so much more here than just a car wash. There's one a quarter mile away that looks exactly like this one that they did not mention, park spaces, you can use it as a community center, a healthy food store. So much more can be used, and most communities...
That's your time. The next speaker, please. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. You're welcome.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Georgina...
Buenas tardes.
Este, para mí...
Georgina.
Georgina Marokin.
Yes, good afternoon or good evening. My name is Georgina Maton.
Para mí, la nueva inversión mejoraría la seguridad de la comunidad, ya que soy madre de tres hijos que van a la universidad, y siento que el proyecto mejoraría la iluminación.
Yes, I would think that the new investment will improve the community's security. I'm a mom of three kids, and they attend the university, and also the investment or project will help with the lighting, green areas.
También mejoraría el trabajo para uno de ellos, ya que ellos están como part-time, y ellos obviamente necesitan... No somos una familia de ingresos muy altos, y eso nos ayudaría mucho a nosotros, a que ellos puedan obtener un trabajo ahí. Me encantaría que ese proyecto se aprobara.
Yes, this will also, the project will also create new jobs, due to a lot of the people that work in, or that live in that area have part-time employment and do not have a higher-end living conditions overall. And I would like to support, we would like to support this project of the car wash.
Thank you very much.
Muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Bernardina de Sánchez, para servirles.
Good evening. My name is Bernardina de Sánchez.
A mí me gustaría que se aprobara el car wash, porque daría mayor vista y trabajo e iluminación en esa área, que por tanto año ha estado descuidada.
Yes, I would like for this car wash project to be approved, in order to give a better view or perspective in the area, and also create jobs, and also help with the lighting environment in that area.
También soy madre de un muchacho que va a la universidad, y también creo que les podría dar la posibilidad de un trabajo de medio tiempo para que se ayudara con sus gastos universitarios.
And I'm also a mom, and I have a kid that goes to college part-time, and I would give him the possibility to work at a part-time basis and to help him out financially.
Muchas gracias por escucharme.
Thank you so much for listening to me.
Thank you. And Michelle?
Hello, my name is Brian Maureen. I'm a resident of Long Beach, and I believe the car wash would be a great investment for the surrounding area to keep a clean environment, making it a better, safer place for people to visit. It will provide a service for the city and people. It will create a base for the future surrounding projects, offering their cleaning services for future tourists and residents. The job will also make multiple job opportunities available for residents and future clients. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Joshua Lopez. I'm a resident of Long Beach also, and I believe approving the car wash project will create a foundation for future projects and keep the area clean and presentable. It will also open jobs for other citizens and even students of Long Beach. This project will provide a spark for new economic investment in the surrounding area and businesses, which it hasn't had for many years. I believe a new investment like this will enhance the safety for the surrounding community and establishment, because they would have new landscaping, security systems, and lighting for the building, which will help prevent vandalism of the establishment. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jesse Franco, and I'm a resident of Long Beach, and I think we should open up the car wash, because it will create permanent jobs in our location and make more for the people that would have to build it. Also, we can keep our city clean, because people will be throwing away their trash when they stop by to clean their cars at the car wash, and I think we have too many bars already in our location, so we should already just change the location and open up the car wash there. Also, the more people that would be stopping by there, we will be able to have the community cleaner, because they will be able to get rid of anything that they would probably throw out their cars on the go in the city, on the streets, you know. So I think this would be a good idea. Plus, changing the location, it would keep it safer from all the crimes you said that were already happening there, the lighting. I know I have some family members that work there in the area, and they tell me that it's too dark and they can't see where they're going. So I would feel safer if it was changed from the bar to the car wash. Thank you.
My name is Michelle Reyes, and I'm a resident of Long Beach, and I am in favor of the car wash project. I am in favor of this project, because it will better the community as a whole. First, it will bring more job opportunities. Providing the community with job opportunities allows for better living standards. Next, the car wash project allows the community to become a safer space. This will be done so by adding lights and security cameras, and as a criminal justice student, I believe this will deter crime, such as vandalism and burglary, from occurring in the community. Lastly, adding more housing adds on to the issue of overcrowding, an issue that is evident, especially in the community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Hello, my name is Alexander Reyes. I am a resident of Long Beach and also a student here at Cal State Long Beach. Being born in Long Beach, I've seen, I witnessed the good and bad, the beautiful and ugly of Long Beach. I believe this car wash project is a good idea, because growing up in Long Beach, I have witnessed the darkness on this side of town, and it is not, there's not very light in this side of town. This car wash project will illuminate the city more and will make it a safer area for us, especially me having a sister. It's, you know, being safe just for my sister, my mom, and other people around me to walk around this area. I believe the car wash project is the correct thing to build in this part of the city, and because we have not seen a new development around this city. For as long as I've lived around here, it's always been the same thing, and it has been a really loud club and bar area, so I say I approve this thing. Thank you for your consideration.
Hi, my name is Paulo. Thank you for giving me a chance to voice my voice. So I reject the idea of building a car wash. There are many, too many car washes, and as the people that suggested, as the teams that are suggesting to build a car wash just said that there's too much traffic, how would that help the traffic building a car wash? And also, I believe they should build, not affordable housing, they should build a facility with all-around services for the community, for the homelessness, for the mental ill, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Can I have the next 10 people go ahead and line up? Randall Morales, Mundo, Sal Vanilla, Christopher Canvas, Ruben Glasser, Shannon Shawn, Brandy Shock, Sunei Keefe, and Alejandro? If you guys can line up in that order, please. Thank you very much. Go ahead, and this is Tom.
Yeah, my name is Tom Sullivan. I've been a resident of Long Beach for over 25 years. I'm a parent of two Poly High School graduates and drive by the site all the time, and think that it would be much improved by having the car wash built here and help start a renaissance of the area and remove the blight of not only this site, but a number of its surrounding sites, and think that the private investment by this group coming into would be a big benefit to the city. Thank you.
Good evening, councils. I'm a resident of Long Beach. I'd like to say, you know, thank you for having me, and I am against building a car wash on PCH, because I looked at it on the corridor of the west, when we were talking about the traffic around there is very dangerous. You have the rally and the gas station. If they do get a car wash there, there's going to be too much traffic, it's going to be too congested, and there's going to be accidents. So I think it would be better if we build a facility for the homeless, that we can get them off the street and then keep our street clean. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Randall Morales. I'm a resident of Long Beach. I actually live in the 6th District. I live blocks away from this proposed place. I disagree with building this car wash. I've lived in Long Beach my whole life. Yes, it is a blind neighborhood. People don't want to pay attention to it when they go down the street. They say it's a dark community. It's dark within those blocks. You should see the city lights that are there. You put a couple of new halogen lights, it's not going to illuminate that street at all. There's overcrowding of trees that are overbushed that take away from that lighting. I walk that streets at night sometimes with my dog, and it is, seems scary. Yes, it is a dangerous environment around there, but putting a car wash is not going to resolve the danger in that community. You have Chicklet Stadium that's right there, that houses a lot of the homeless people that are in that community. You shuffle them back and forth from street to street, and they go right back to the same spot within less than 24 hours. I'm not asking you to build affordable housing, I'm just taking the consideration of what you guys proposed earlier about helping the homeless community. If you actually take a look at that, or what you guys are proposing, and put a facility there that can help these individuals rehabilitate themselves and get the proper help that they need to move forward in this community, I think you guys will actually come out a better head than having a car wash there that can take away from this neighborhood, because you do have two car washes within less than a mile from each other, and it's just going to accumulate more than that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, hello. My name is Mundo, and I'm also a resident of Long Beach, and I urge you to please reject the car wash project. I live and work close to PCH and Cherry, and another car wash is the last thing we need here. There are four other car washes within a quarter mile of PCH and Cherry. We need a place that brings people together, like a community room, or restaurant, or grocery store, or coffee shop, something, like anything else other than... else other than car wash. We need something that creates a lot of jobs, not just a few. We also have a homelessness crisis. One way to solve homelessness is to build affordable housing. This is a great location for a mixed-use project with affordable housing and retail. A car wash does not solve the homelessness problem. A car wash doesn't benefit the community. A car wash will not decrease crimes in the area. Please deny the application for the car wash and show the people of 6th District that you are serious about tackling homelessness and want this land for affordable housing and retail. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christopher Cambus. I live on the corner of Gundry Anne, Pacific Coast Highway. I find it pretty funny that the developers show you the two 30-year-old car washes. They don't show you the two new car washes that have been built a quarter mile away from each other that look exactly like the one that they're going to build there. And second of all, I really do think we need housing. On the other side of Cherry, those condos and townhouses sold like mad. Or a development center to process people and help people with their mental illnesses and homeless, like, you know, county mental health processing facility or something like that. It's a horrible situation, but to say that block has not changed is a lie. CVS was mowed over in the riots and it's brand-new, not really still now, but somebody said that it hasn't changed. There's a lot that's changed in that neighborhood, but one thing is, is we don't need another car wash. There's two one-quarter, one and one-fourth miles apart that you use your hand with. And then there's the two express car washes which are brand-new. They're probably less than three years old and they look exactly like the one that they want to build. And I think that it would be much better suited to do something to help the homeless problem and mental health and processing people.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Shannon Shawn. I'm representing the owners. And I was going to go over some of those same things about security, but I just wanted to urge the city council to please approve our use for all the aforementioned security, lighting, all the different things that this project will bring to the community, as opposed to having some of those security issues that were discussed earlier. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ruben Glazer and I'm part of the car wash. I believe the car wash would be a great addition to the project site. It is very eco-friendly, as stated, with the local wasted water. I think it would be way better than a late-night club until 2:00. The car wash will bring a new spark in the community and spark in the development in the surrounding areas. Also provide new job opportunities. The car wash will provide a safety hand in the community with well-lighting and will be covered in cameras to prevent vandalism. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Brandy Brown Shock. I am the founder and CEO of Pass of Haven. I run a drop-in center for homeless youth ages 16 to 25. And I am here, not in favor of the car wash, but mainly because I, you know, as they were talking about the area being blighted, then that is the perfect opportunity for there to be maybe a second multi-service center, whether it be, you know, tiny homes or affordable housing. But I think we can definitely utilize that space more than adding another car wash. Everyone in, you know, along this panel knows that we don't need another car wash. We don't need another convenience store. We don't need another check-cashing place. We definitely need to provide the services to the homeless individuals that are here within our city. Thank you.
I just want to say, don't take it personal because I got a bang on you, Mr. City Manager. Sineh Kenfe, 6th District resident. I think it's fascinating that Mr. Alex Sharon, who's a lobbyist, he said in 1988 he was going to Long Beach Poly. And if you're going to Long Beach Poly, if you made a left at that intersection that you referenced, you would be going in the opposite direction of where this car wash is. You don't even know what you're talking about, which I think shows that there's a complete disconnect from these lobbyists and these developers who poach on these poor areas that, no disrespect to you, Mr. City Manager, but you had 12 years of maintained blight and then you go into the private sector and you say, hey, I have a solution. Where was your solution at? 12 years, the 12 years where you are a city manager. You had no solution. It's a problem. This is a problem where we have people coming into our area and they're taking advantage of the fact, we as the community members, we're not the ones that are allowing to be underutilized. That's our, that's, that's, that's the city council, that's the city government that's allowing to be utilized. And it's fascinating, you know, I don't, I don't have no issue with people from the community getting their little check. That's okay. Times is hard. You got to get your check to say what they want you to say. So, I understand. I don't take it personal, but I saw one of the developers take 15 speaker cards. And then we had 15, we had 15 people in a row speak the same exact parroted message. Come on. It's a joke. I live in a neighborhood. And I just want to say too, we just had a thing called the Levine Act. It's a pay-for-play act. And it's where that developers, we have multiple developers here who've made donations to people who have to vote on this. If it wasn't retroactive, there would be more people have to recuse themselves right now.
Let me have the next folks line up. Ayesha, Shishan, Sharon, Caesar, Bradella, I think I'm saying that right, Delanda, Elsa, Rosio, Zinzu, Ahmed, Sayon, Marcella, Ahmed, Matthew, and Alejandro. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Alejandro Poole and I'm a Long Beach resident. We should approve this car wash because it'll bring a lot of business to the area. That will benefit the local area. It'll also create local jobs for the residents. It'll create construction jobs which are all beneficial for the city. The site isn't ready for housing as it appears. All the neighboring buildings are commercial. If we do not approve this car wash, the lot will just continue to sit in ruin and it will continue to get worse. It's a spark is all this community needs to have a transformation. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ayesha Chuan. I would like to say, ask you, please reject the car wash permit. We don't need any other car wash. We have a lot of car washes in this area. PCH and Cherry, we have homelessness problem. We should like something housing for the people, like grocery store, something. That's all. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sean McGinnis. I'm here to say I think you should reject this car wash, lighting. Everything they're talking about is not going to help the violence or the crime or whatever. We need something that's going to definitely help people. And another car wash when, you know, having another car wash, when having car washes down the street is just pointless. It doesn't make any sense. And yeah, I think you should reject this offer. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alejandro Reynoso. I'm a Long Beach resident since 1996. And I have actually worked at that place, at that restaurant called Los Potros since 1997. So, next month it's going to be 26 years. I'm the security guard right there. About all the problems and all the police calls that they have that they've mentioned basically, let's say like 80% of those is basically accidents that happen outside on the street, but I don't know if you guys have ever called 911. They need an address to get to where you are. So, basically, the closest address they're going to see is from the restaurant. It's no, they're going to say that address, they can get there. It could be a car accident, somebody robbed on the street, but they will see that address so the police can get to that place. About the lighting, the restaurant has lighting. They never showed any pictures of the restaurant operating at night. During the day, I mean, it's daytime, we don't need lighting. The restaurant operates all day. The nightclub starts at 8:00 to 2:00 in the morning. During that time, basically, there's lighting. The only problem, no, where there's not enough lighting, those are the city lamps, the city lights. That's not that restaurant's concern. Well, I mean, it's not our, we're not the ones that are going to fix those lights. That belongs to the city. They're the ones that's supposed to be more lighting on the street. The restaurant has lighting. Now, the only thing, I don't know if you guys noticed, most of the people that are for the car wash basically read the same, same script. Most of them, I don't even think they live there. Now they mentioned another thing, no, that this is going to create new jobs.
Thank you so much. Your time is up. Thank you.
All the jobs that we're already, I mean, that we have already there. We got waitresses, we got cooks, we have bartenders, we have security.
Thank you so much. You have a lot of people behind you that want to speak. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Baldelia. I'm asking for you guys to reject the project for the reason that maybe we need centers for autistic students. For example, I have a son that has autism spectrum disorder. I would like for the community to check. Maybe there could be an outreach center for people that don't know how to deal with kids with autism. That's maybe a better idea than building another car wash. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Delanda Stevens. I also live in Long Beach since 1973. And I believe that we should not have a car wash, that we should actually make more stuff for the homeless, you know, like, or, you know, mental health or something permanent, you know, versus having a car wash. We really don't need that in our city. Thank you.
My name is Ahmed and I'm a resident pretty much on Cherry and PCH. And also, I'm the CEO of Masris Transport LLC. And in a simple word, I think another car wash, it's a more hazard. We don't need it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sinu Lynn and I'm speaking on behalf of City Fabric, a Long Beach-based nonprofit urban design studio. We urge you to deny the conditional use permit. City Fabric, along with local nonprofits, Long Beach Forward, United Cambodian Community, and Walk Long Beach, are consultants to the city of Long Beach on the Zone-In-City Core Project, which is a process to update the zoning code for the central Long Beach area. It encompasses the area in which this automated car wash is being proposed. Since early 2022, thousands of residents, business owners, and local stakeholders have participated in the City Core engagement process. An automated car wash is not in alignment with the vision that we have heard from residents. What we have heard during the City Core process is a need for more uses that benefit the community. Affordable housing, grocery stores, cultural centers, community-serving businesses, open spaces, parks. These are all highly desired in this neighborhood and could be built on that piece of land instead of an automated car wash that brings very few resources and jobs to the local community. Please listen to the numerous community members who have repeatedly spoken out against this project. I strongly urge you to deny a conditional use permit for the proposed automated car wash. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council members. My name is Elsa Tong, District 5 homeowner and land use program manager from local nonprofit Long Beach Forward. Long Beach Forward is proud to be a subcontracted community partner with the city on the Zone-In-City Core rezoning plan. Council members, as you heard in this evening's Black History Month presentation, the history of planning and development in Long Beach has been racist and discriminatory, resulting in racial concentrations of poverty, disinvestment, and pollution burden in Central, West, and North Long Beach. This automated car wash project, repeat automated, as in very few jobs, flies in the face of all of the amazing, good-faith community work that both Development Services and CBOs are doing for the City Core rezoning plan, which will come before you later this year. Do not be fooled by the developers' so-called jobs argument. And do not be fooled by the developers' argument that this development is better than no development, which is faulty at best and racist at worst. Because you don't hear former city manager and now lobbyist Pat West making this patronizing, fear-mongering argument in wealthier and whiter East Long Beach, or Bixby Knowles, do you? Where do you hear this argument? Well, yes, the systematically disadvantaged communities of color in Central, West, and North Long Beach. The community refuses to be steamrolled by developers. Council members, deny this car wash. Do the right thing.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sayon Cypresssooth. I'm a Long Beach resident. I've lived in, right by there on Cherry and Pacific Coast Highway in 1983. And that restaurant, the current restaurant now, used to be Mianette's Pizza. I used to go there to play video games in high school. And, you know, that area, it could be anything but a car wash. There's no place for kids to play. You know, when we were little, we used to jump the fence to go and play in Chetwick Field. And the, on the other side of the street is the railroad track. So, all that family within that block area has no place to play. So, if you want to do anything, make it into a playground. I'm an artist. I'm on the Arts Council Board. Have us put a playground there, build a tiny house for you, design it for you for free. And please, if you, if you are running out of ideas on what to do with that area, reach out to the Arts Council and myself. And I'd be happy to do it and volunteer my time to design something. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, CEO.
Good evening, Honorable, he's not here, Vice Mayor and City Council members. My name is Rosio Torres. I am part of AOC 7 Neighborhood Organization. AOC 7 Neighborhood Organization opposes the addition of yet another car wash on PCH near the intersection of Cherry and Pacific Coast Highway. We are in a highly impacted urban district which is in need of affordable housing, greater walkability, and more green spaces. Along PCH, within a mile of this location, there are two car washes. This car wash will not bring any additional services, resources to our community. We urge at this, we urge you, we urge in this community that we designate it affordable housing, anything that would be affordable housing, wellness, community spaces contributing to our neighborhood. Our neighborhood needs more spaces to help build community. Our neighborhood needs commercial storefronts like grocery stores for healthier food choices. Our neighborhood does not need another car wash with 10 jobs that will only be coming to our neighborhood. Please, I urge you to deny the car wash. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. There you go. So, real quick, thank you guys for focusing on homelessness, honestly, because about 25 years ago, I was a homeless 15-year-old kid. So, thank you. But, with that being said, I agree with the car wash. As a business owner, myself nowadays, I feel that as a business owner, we have the power to impact the city. And the car wash making the commitment to actually supporting financially, you know, younger football teams and the next generation, I think it would make a big impact because that would be the first business that would do that and then hopefully others follow along later on. So, aside from the, you know, making the street looking better and all that, which it would, you know, but it would, as business owners, once again, we have a huge impact when we get involved with the community and making the difference for the next generation. So.
Thank you very much. What is your name?
Mauricio Vialta.
Sorry?
Mauricio.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. Matthew, a Long Beach resident, Matthew Poole. I think we should approve the car wash because it'll give some much-needed vibrance to the area and make it safer with the redone walkways, cameras, and the increased lighting. It will also promote further investment by other local businesses who will hopefully follow in the footsteps. And it will also increase jobs for the locals during the renovation and establish consistent jobs when the car wash can eventually open up. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I still, is Ahmed or Alejandro? It looks like I'm missing two. Okay. All right. That concludes our public comments.
Come on, Poole. We'll take your public comment.
Hello. My name is Mika Wayne. And first of all, I would like to thank the city of Long Beach just for this meeting here today. I made it a priority to come down today because I wanted to thank the mayor just for his presence today. The reason why I'm here is because I need help. I did all the right things. I'm born and raised in the city of Long Beach and I did all the right things. I raised my kids right. I have six children. And I have a son who's mentally ill. And I'm officially on my daughter's couch because I'm evicted from my Long Beach residence because I was a single mother. Everybody's talking about a car wash and we have so many car washes in Long Beach. We need help with the homelessness and I appreciate you guys deeming it a state of emergency. There's no need for another car wash in the city of Long Beach. We need tangible solutions. We need tangible solutions for the homeless and the mental health. Period. I have a whole business plan about helping the mental health and I would like to one day have a personal meeting with the mayor so we can discuss that. And I know it's just not enough time today, but again, thank you for just hearing me.
Thank you very much. All right, that satisfies public comment. Thanks so much, Vice Mayor, for facilitating that. We'll now take it back behind the rail. Councilwoman Soro.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank city staff for the presentation for the hearing and also all the residents who's been engaged, as well as many nonprofit neighborhood groups and businesses in sharing your comments. You know, I've been a council member the last few years and I've really been committed to exploring with residents about how to invest in our businesses, revitalize our quarter, and ensure that we're bringing in businesses that promote healthier lifestyles. So I do want to ask a few questions about this property. Can you clarify, is this city-owned private property? And what is the process in buying this, acquiring this property to do various activity?
Thank you for the question, Councilwoman. So yes, this is a privately owned piece of property. And so what we do in Development Services is take in applications where the property owner is proposing to us what they would like to do with that property. And then we have the legal grounds to consider whether to approve that use if it does require any special permits like it does in this case. So it is a little bit different than if it were to be publicly owned, where since we do not own the land, we are here as the land use authority as to whether to approve or if we improve the site with what conditions. And so we could not, for example, require it to be a certain type of use, to your point.
And could you also just share if, for example, if this doesn't become a car wash, would it remain as is as far as the property goes? And what other option could there be for this property?
Yes, so that's definitely at the heart of, I think, with this decision, what the trade-offs are. Because at this time, there's no other proposed development for this property. We're unaware of any other proposals being considered. There was some analysis done as part of the application to look at sort of whether other opportunity, or other development opportunities are feasible. And as part of the applicant analysis, they did not find there to be feasible alternatives. The city did have a peer review of that analysis and believes there may be some feasibility, but it's certainly, certainly not clear at this point with the economics whether that would be the case. And so this could be an opportunity cost consideration in terms of sort of the short-term versus long-term impacts. And it's likely that we would continue to see the site utilized as is if this were to be denied.
And, you know, I just want to ask, should, if there were, I guess I want to just ask, is there a potential for, as I hear, we're in the City Core planning process, changing the zoning. If it was to be changed, would there be a potential for other, like, would there be a potential applicant in the near future for something as an alternative to car wash?
So the rezoning process would definitely change the regulations in terms of what's allowed on the site and under what processes a future proposal could be considered. But we do not know what that would mean in terms of a specific proposal at this site. So the zoning today already does allow a range of uses. The zoning code update looks like it would allow a wider range of uses with a bigger focus on some community-serving uses that you heard about this evening. But again, it would be up to the private property owner as to what, if any, different type of development they might propose. And the rezoning does not necessarily mean the economics are behind it as well. So that's part of the consideration that you see as part of the packet, as well as whether the economics would support a different use.
And the other question I have is, does current business have a liquor license? What kind of license exactly is the ABC license, if you can share?
Yes, so the license there today is a Type 47 alcohol license. So it's a broader, more permissive type of alcohol license on the site today.
So with this property remaining, is there a chance for, let's say the restaurant doesn't continue to operate, what other, they could continue to use this license right and continue the same activity?
Continued activity, yes, could happen even if the property were to change operators.
Okay, I'm going to queue again. I know that, I have a few more, so I'm going to requeue up.
Thank you. Councilmember Superna?
Thank you. I represented this area for six and a half years up until redistricting took over. But my question specifically is about Caltrans because, and I'll refer to my experience at the traffic circle. There were, I think, half a dozen drive-throughs that went in at the traffic circle. Those abutting PCH could not have a driveway, a drive-through that impacted that. So as I looked at the diagram, 20 years, I don't recall which page it was, but it showed the queue line up to the pay station with six cars in it. And then maybe a couple of other spaces for after you pass the pay station. It looks to me like those cars would then, the queue would go out Gardena and onto PCH. And so my question is, was an opinion sought of Caltrans? I'm sure it was. It's always been part of the process. And have they weighed in on approval on that queue line?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. So yes, Caltrans was, we did seek feedback from Caltrans as part of the process in doing our technical advisory committee work, which comes forward with a per project like this. So we have consulted with them and they provided some initial comments. But, you know, full clarification as to whether the specific use in this configuration would be allowed, we don't have today. Because the recommendation was for denial to the Planning Commission and we are bringing it forward now to council, we would need to come back with findings and required conditions should such a project be approved, because the original recommendations were for denial. So those conditions and findings are not before you today.
Okay, so an approval tonight by council might still be subject to approval from Caltrans in terms of the queue line. And that, I guess it's back to the drawing board for the developer at that point. If that doesn't work, you'd have to look at other alternatives to that queue going south on Gardena. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Soro.
So I want to, I wanted to ask some clarifying question. And I want to share that I am in agreement with, you know, our six district residents around the need for affordable housing, which we are building more than any other parts of our district right now. We have five to six currently in the works. And the other is, I agree we need community services as well, which is why we are thinking about creative ways to using, you know, affordable housing where it has commercial space for those community service to wellness services. And exploring how we can continue to preserve green space, you know, given that there is a need for housing, right? How do we make sure we still have some space that's available for recreational use? And also around safe walkability in neighborhoods that have businesses with healthier options. And, you know, as part of the proposed agenda item will come later is for me to be the Chair of Mobility and Infrastructure Port, which is Vice Chair of the Tourism, Arts, and Culture and Member of the Economic Development and Opportunity Committee, is that I'm committed to working with all of you I have and are as far as making sure we bring those items that's mentioned and more to our area. But I think that at this moment, this site, given the information shared by staff, the opportunities presented as far as what could still, what it is now and what it will continue to be if we don't have an opportunity to do something in that space at the moment. And so I want to make a motion that there's several parts to it. And that is, one, to receive the supporting documentation into the record, conclude the public hearing on appellant's appeal. Two, adopt a resolution adopting and certifying a mitigated negative declaration and making findings of fact. And three, declare an ordinance amending the land use map as set forth in the council. And lastly, I am making a motion to uphold the appeal, to overturn the denial of the Planning Commission and prove the project's subject to appropriate condition for the site and direct staff to prepare appropriate condition for a conditional use permit along with affirmative required findings and bring it back to the city council for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Zandehas.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a couple of clarifying questions. First of all, can you tell me a little bit about the history of the site? Maybe within the last couple of years? Please.
Certainly. So in terms of the history of the site, I spoke a little bit to some of the challenges related to calls for service. I believe it was 67 calls since early 2020, as well as some of the history of code enforcement cases at the site. I can tell you that the business has been there for a fair amount of time. Other than that, that's kind of what I can share today in terms of the history.
Thank you. Also, in terms of the property itself being privately owned, it would be great to have something there for the community. But from what I understand, and please correct me if I'm wrong, it is a private property and there, the owners will be deciding what is there. And then it's our job to indicate whether they are able to do, have that facility whatever they want there, correct?
Yes, so as private property owners, they are able to come to us with a proposal of the type of use they want for the piece of land. And depending on the proposed land use, sometimes that's allowed by right or sort of over the counter, as it's sometimes called. Other times, it's a type of use that may work in some locations in a zone, but not others. And that's when the requirement for a conditional use permit comes into play so that staff has the findings that are required in our code to consider the conditional use permit against, and then makes a recommendation to the decision-making body as to whether to approve, and if we do approve, what conditions of approval should be included, both for construction and operating purposes, to ensure that there are not negative impacts on nearby properties. So you're correct that the property owner is able to come to us to propose what types of uses they would like to use the property for, consistent with the code. And that's where we, as the land use decision-making organization, get to make a decision or suggest conditions for that proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we've concluded council comment and public comment. We have a motion and a second. The motion, and Madam City of Terminacy clarified, but the motion here would approve the CUP and effectively approve the car wash. So a I vote would approve it, a no vote would deny it, correct?
That is mostly correct. An I vote would approve the car wash with conditions, but direct staff to put those conditions together and bring them back for a final approval by the council.
So we'd still have to come back and hear the condition of operation for this site. So we'd have to do that on a separate date.
That's right.
Okay, understood. All right, members, please cast your vote. Thank you, folks.
Motion is carried, 7-0.
Thank you. We'll now go to general public comment. Thank you, thank you. We, council has a bit more business to conduct. We'll now go to public comment. Thank you. So we have six members of the public, just a moment. If folks are, if folks are leaving, now would be, now would be the time to do so before we pull up the next comments. All right, so public comment is next. We have Anthony Bell, Elliot Lewis, Kirk Davis, Brenda Nivares, Jessica Quintana, and Karimé Bersiaga. First is Anthony Bell.
Honorable Mayor, council members, staff, members of the public, my name is Tony Bell. I am the father of a young lady who goes to school across the street from Silverado Park. I'm the leader of Westside Elevate and also the Greater Westside Long Beach Business Association, as well as a member of the Westside Long Beach Alliance. Last Tuesday, I delivered a letter and a petition containing over 800 signatures and e-signatures in regards to Silverado Park, to the city clerk, for each councilperson and the mayor. We also emailed it to each of these as well. To this date, we still have not received any official response to the letter. So for the record, I'm reading excerpts of the letter right now. Dear City of Long Beach officials, we, the residents of Long Beach, are writing this petition to express our deep concern and opposition to the City of Long Beach's plan to utilize the Silverado Park Gymnasium as a temporary emergency shelter. As members of this community, we are aware of the pressing need to address homelessness in our city. However, we believe that the City of Long Beach's plan to utilize the Silverado Gymnasium is not the appropriate solution. The Silverado Gymnasium is a crucial source of physical and mental health, serving as a place for exercise, recreation, and community building. The loss of this gymnasium would have a devastating impact on our community, leaving us without a place to stay active and healthy. Although the city has stated that it has a plan to ensure that the clients of this shelter will be contained, we believe that the increased activity in the park that is not in alignment with the purpose of a park will negatively impact the quality of life in and near the park. The city's plan to utilize Silverado Park as a temporary shelter will create an undue and unreasonable burden upon the surrounding community. According to the Report on Racial Equity and Reconciliation Initiative, a goal of the City of Long Beach is to increase access to park space and recreation programming to foster physical activity, community connections, and safe places for children and families to play in park equity zones in North, Central, and West Long Beach. Converting the Silverado Park Gymnasium is contrary to the city's own goal. The City of Long Beach's park recreation and marine mission is, we create community and enhance the quality of life in Long Beach through people, places, programs, and partnerships. The decision to utilize Silverado Park Gymnasium is not in alignment with the city's own mission, nor does it meet the city's goals in the strategic plan of parks, recreation, and marine as listed. Ensuring open space, parks, and recreation facilities meet community needs. Ensuring city parks and recreational facilities provide a positive experience and image. Ensuring recreational programming, leisure opportunities, and community services meet the diverse needs and interests of the residents and visitors. We demand that the City of Long Beach cease and desist from its plan to utilize the Silverado Park Gymnasium and the area surrounding the gymnasium for an emergency homeless shelter. We demand that the City of Long Beach find an alternative location. You have already made it abundantly clear that you're going to move forward no matter what. However, we stand in disagreement and opposition. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Next is Elliot Lewis.
Thank you. My name's Elliot Lewis, resident of City of Long Beach. I'm speaking on behalf of my wife, Anna Lewis, who's not here today. I want to discuss the matter of the constant harassment over at Anna's. So we just received some evidence back in the ABC case. If you're to believe that the vice cops just accidentally stumbled on Anna's and started filming people like creeps at our grand opening, by coincidence, that's impossible. Councilwoman Zandehas was there. Somebody from the former mayor's office was there. And you have people from the vice squad here in Long Beach with nothing better to do but film our patrons. Quite frankly, their big smoking gun is catching somebody from City Island's office hanging over the rail just a little bit to have a beer. I mean, this is just straight up ridiculous. That's how we're spending our police resources. Good thing we have our own video, because a lot of what's out there is provably false. So the best they got is four or five people walk in the street carrying them beers. We had clear signs not to leave. They came down there three separate occasions. But I do want to say this. July 23rd, is that a coincidence? No, I spoke publicly about police overtime July 12th. You might not like how I say it, but I have that right as a citizen of this city to speak freely. Again, on July 14th, I showed the salaries that they make in the overtime. All this talk about defund the police or whatever, and I'm not a defund guy, but let's talk about people making a quarter million a dollar a year playing the system for overtime. That's exactly when the harassment started. That's when the vice squad came down. They're literally there filming people, my wife. That's some super creepy shit. And let's be honest, we're trying to increase the business activity on North Pine. We're doing everything we can to do that. And apparently, city council and the mayor can't even control their own police department and they're off on some witch hunt. I guarantee if it wasn't me, they wouldn't- wouldn't be there filming people having a drink. And if the worst thing that ever happened is four or five people were in a dead area having a drink, that's a good thing. But I want to say this. Thank you, LBD. Thank you for bringing the case. Because guess what? Now I got discovery rights. And you can't hide behind the PRAs, and you can't say under investigations. They're going to get court ordered, and we're going to get to the bottom of it. And now I'll be in a position to prove abuse of power, to prove corruption. And I know nobody up here is going to look into it, or they're going to care. But let's just take it down to the human common sense level. How on a grand opening is LBD vice cops there filming people, filming my wife, a business, and by the way, the only bar between here and Anaheim? That's just straight up creepy, abuse of power, and wrong. And guess what? I ain't bending my knee. I'm going to still be here talking. And LBD, come another round because I'm taking y'all out.
Thank you. Next is Kirk Davis. I don't think I see Kirk here. Is Kirk here? No. Okay, Brenda Nivares.
Hi, my name is Edith Perez, and I reside in District Seven, near Silverado Park. Edith.
Edith?
Edith.
I don't have Edith Perez signed up on this issue. Madam Clerk, is there an addition? Okay, Edith, if you could just wait till the end, I'll take you because we still have some room.
Okay.
So is Brenda here? Okay, what about, and Jessica, you're next. Thank you.
Yeah, I think Brenda was here with her child, but she couldn't wait any longer.
Understood.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Richardson, members of the city council, city manager. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today, although it's really heartbreaking and disappointing as to why we have to be at council today, waiting almost three hours to speak. This is really like kind of a no-brainer. We're here in opposition of the homeless shelter to be placed at Silverado Park. My name is Jessica Quintana. I've lived in the city of Long Beach for over fifty-four years, went to Silverado Park as a youth, swam there. My kids play baseball. My father owns apartment buildings right in the west side of Long Beach and, you know, provides really modest rent, you know, because he wants to do his part in the community in making sure that he provides housing for his tenants. You know, I heard it be said that, you know, everybody needs to do their part in homeless services across the city. But, you know, what I could say is the west side of Long Beach has done more and above of their share of providing homeless services. We have a twenty-seven acre of homeless services that is the villages of Cabrillo. We have the MSC that's also located in west Long Beach. We have mental health boarding places in west Long Beach. So if you've never lived in west Long Beach and haven't experienced, you know, being over there, it's pretty much the stepchild of Long Beach. So we don't have grocery stores that are nutritious and provide viable fruit and meats for the community. We don't have a pharmacy. We don't have a banking institution. We have two parks in our west Long Beach area, Silverado Park and Admiral Kidd Park. And these are the only parks, if you can imagine, per the equity of residents that live there, we are in violation of having less park space. So making the decision, you know, all respect, Mayor Richardson, we had a conversation, this is absolutely not the right decision. And I'm asking you to please rescind it, do whatever you need to do, City Manager Tom Modica. This is not the best option for our community. This doesn't align with the racial equity plan. This doesn't align with the park strategic plan. This doesn't align with the previous park equity plan that our current Senator Lena Gonzalez provided for park equity for our communities. This doesn't align with the blueprint. Our areas, it's proven evidence based that we need park space, especially for our youth and youth of color. Our black and brown and Asian Pacific Islander communities have less park space than any other affluent areas. And so, you know, the harm that you're doing, creating in our community by putting this shelter there, nobody's in opposition of homeless people needing shelter. One hundred percent, they need shelter.
Ma'am, your time's up.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ma'am, your time's concluded.
Thank you. Next is Karimé Bersiaga.
Hello, my name is Karimé Bersiaga. I am born and raised in west Long Beach. My parents are homeowners. I now have my own daughter, and the last thing I need a couple miles from my house is a homeless shelter. It is near a school. It's somewhere where people go so their kids could play sports, could swim, could have activities, picnics. And it's not fair that you put a homeless shelter there. We already have a very bad homeless problem because they do live in the freeway area, so when they leave, they want to go to a store. They want to access anything. They come down into our neighborhood. So I think you should take care of that some other way. Leave our parks as parks, as a safe space for our kids, for our families, for elder folks. Think about what you're doing to west Long Beach, and let's keep it safe and a positive area for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Edith, if you want to come forward, you'd be our final speaker.
Good evening. Hi, my name's Edith Perez, and I reside in District Seven, near Silverado Park, with my children. As you know, the community is healing from the tragic death of Khalid Salim, who was murdered at Silverado Park. Silverado Park is within walking distance from my house, where my family gets to enjoy picnics, walks, and where my daughter gets to enjoy playing with other children. My son is a seventh grader at John Mearl Elementary School, and the school uses Silverado Park for physical education activities, educational activities. Families pay taxes for recreational opportunities for our children, not to house the homeless population. Many homeless individuals suffer from severe mental illnesses and addictions, which can increase crime and create unsanitary environments. City council leaders, you guys could find alternatives relocating the emergency shelter elsewhere. Please do not take the limited green space that the west community has. Thank you.
Thank you. So that satisfies public comment. Moving on with the agenda, we next have item number twenty, please.
Report from City Attorney, recommendation to adopt a resolution establishing a revised list of city council standing committees and a council authorities and special committees citywide.
Thank you. This is a report from my office, and this is our list of standing committees, city council authorities, special committees. So we update these once every two years. We talked about the restructuring of the committees last week, so I don't have to really speak on that. But what I will say is that I'm really, you know, I'm really proud of our council members for leading in this shared responsibility model where we have city council agenda, city council committees now aligned with some of our key areas of focus in our city. Economic development is now economic opportunity. Our climate change committee has a bigger emphasis on coastal protection now. We have, we've always had issues, committees like infrastructure replacing an emphasis on mobility and aviation, and some of those issues that are, you know, respect to our ports. Let's see, our educational partnerships committee. So this is my recommendations of who should lead some of these efforts and what this membership looks like. And so I'll pass it over to Vice Mayor Allen.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. As I mentioned last week, I appreciated the updated set of standing committees as well as the new structures. So I look forward to myself chairing the economic development and opportunity committee and the housing authority as a vice mayor. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Zendejas.
Super excited about these committees that have been built. I know there's going to be a lot of great things coming from each of these new committees that have been formed, and I look forward to participating in it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public comment here on this item? Okay, seeing none, members, please cast your votes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. All right, moving right along is item eleven.
Excuse me, Mayor, I think you might have skipped ten.
About what? That was ten.
No, that was twenty. We were starting with twenty, and then we have to go to ten after twenty.
I thought we just voted on ten. Was that not ten, the standing committees?
Item twenty?
Oh, revised. I'm looking at the old list. Okay, let's go, let's follow your order. What did I already on?
Item ten.
Item ten, let's do it.
Communication from Mayor Richardson, recommendation to receive and file a new list of city council standing committees, authorities, and membership.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Members, please cast your vote.
There is public comment on this item? Gregory Johnson, if you can please come.
Gregory Johnson, please come forward.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Honorable City Council. I won't be before you very long. I am here today as president of the Arts Council for Long Beach, and we wanted to express today our support for particularly the Arts, Culture, and Tourism Committee. I've wanted to take this opportunity to share with you and amplify the fact, lift up the fact that your Arts Council for Long Beach is indeed a major player in the arts and culture sector across the state. I had the opportunity recently to accompany Griselda Suarez, our executive director, to hear the Director of the National Endowment for the Arts. Arts organizations from all over Southern California were in attendance, and I observed personally how in such high esteem the Arts Council for Long Beach is held in this, in this sector. The fact that we are one of the agencies administering the California Creative Corps is essential. What we did during the pandemic is essential. So as we form together these committees and everything, we want you to know that the Arts Council is here to support and work with you. We've got a lot of expertise in this space. I see a lot of different sectors of arts and culture in my time, short time as a part of the arts and culture, the Arts Council for Long Beach. And I would love to just suggest maybe an arts summit, if you will, so that all of the people, CVB, tourism, whoever, whoever needs to come to the table, so that we can have a meeting of the minds and even take this arts and culture sector to the next level. Thank you so much. Peace and blessings.
Thank you. Okay, so I got it straightened out now. The last one was the second reading of establishing the revised list of standing committees, and this is the actual appointments. And so, you know, we want to lift up and recognize this is a shared sort of leadership model. Budget Oversight Committee has a new chair, Dr. Joni Rixody. Arts Culture and Tourism, a new committee, Chair Mary Zendejas. Enter Government Affairs is a merged committee that we just approved between state and fed ledge, Chair Roberto Uranga. Mobility Points and Infrastructure Committee, Suli Saro. Economic Development and Opportunity Committee, Chair Cindy Allen. Public Safety Committee, Chair Al Austin. Climate, Environment, Coastal Protection Committee, Chair Christina Duggan. Housing Public Health Committee, Chair Megan Kerr. Government Operations and Efficiency Committee, Darryl Supernaw. We have Educational Partnerships Committee, which is a expanded scope of the Joint Use Committee, that's Chair Megan Kerr. And then we have, the rest of these are pretty standard. They're not significant changes, just a change in the order. Members, please cast your vote.
Councilmember Rixody? Motion is carried, eight zero.
All right. Next, we have item eleven, please.
Communication from Councilmember Uranga, Chair of the State Ledge Committee, recommendation to request city council approval for the 2023 state legislative agenda as recommended by the state legislation committee.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there a brief staff report here?
Yep, happy to provide an overview. So just for some context, especially for the newer members, each year, we work with our staff across departments to identify some of the funding and legislative priorities for the following legislative session. So what you have before you is a draft proposal of what our legislative, our state legislative agenda would look like for this year, incorporating some of those staff recommendations as well as some of the city council actions over the last year. And a few items I'll just briefly mention, there are some top priority focus statements for this year, related, of course, to some of our conversation earlier around state funding for homeless services in the HAP program. The committee also recommended adding some language around supporting more of our regional advocacy efforts around homeless services and support. There's items in here also to continue working on the transition of community hospital into a non-acute care site for behavioral health services. There's a need for state legislation, basically to be able to allow for the permitting of that project. And there are a couple items also focused this year that are in response to legislation last year related to seeking additional state support and resources for oil well abandonment, as well as our transition and looking at new technologies at our surf site for waste energy and other waste management solutions. Then, of course, there are outlined a number of different directives across issue areas that I'll quickly go through. In terms of energy, we had some council direction to look at and support the Arches Coalition around clean hydrogen, which we've been engaged in over the past eight months or so. There's an item in here also related to council action to support the decarbonization of the maritime shipping industry. The airport and in follow-up to council action over the last few months has recommended an item around supporting resources to transition to unleaded aviation gas. We're also proposing that we incorporate an equity section. There are dozens of directives throughout the agenda related to advancing our equity goals, but this would be really to highlight some of our high-level priorities in the racial reconciliation report. Public safety, there are a number of recommended changes and streamlining to that section, specifically around kind of strengthening the language for concealed carry permits, some of our interest in partnership around crime and opioid and fentanyl overdoses and so on, as well as more resources for wellness and training. There is, in the technology section, an item related to a state grant program that would be able to help strengthen our cybersecurity efforts. And then last, I know we have a conversation later around some of our Vision Zero priorities. So we also are recommending a new section that codifies some of those priorities around Vision Zero. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilman Austin, anything?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to just say as Vice Chair of the State Ledge Committee, I'm happy to make the motion to put this forth and urge my colleagues to adopt this. It's clear that our staff, and I'll just compliment Dr. Curry and his team for really listening and engaging the council. Most of what you see here in terms of this agenda very much reflects the values that this council stands on and has stood on for the past several years, and it just, we continue to build on that and build upon it. I've had the good fortune of being on the State Ledge Committee for the last eight years. Doesn't look like I'm going to be on this committee moving forward, but I'm happy to lend my support and my historical perspective to my colleagues on this particular committee moving forward, and I urge you all to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Allen?
Yeah, thank you very much. I am just excited to hear about these priorities. Obviously, new technologies for waste development, and, you know, I've been a big advocate of Arches and also the decarbonization of the maritime shipping industry. All of that stuff is just music to my ears. So thank you very much, and appreciate it.
Thank you. Fantastic. We have one member of the public signed up for public comment, Anna Christiansen.
Thank you very much. I'm here representing specifically the Lo Ceritos Wetlands Task Force, but more in general Sierra Club's position regarding the concern of Long Beach that was expressed apparently by a lobbyist. I didn't see that hearing, but also in but also in, in statements from our city manager to you, the council, and to the Legislative Committee about the bill SB 1137. Those comments in general seem to take, to us, a pretty negative approach towards the impacts of SB 1137, or let's just put it limited. They seem to focus on the, the immediate cost or reduction in income from our Thailand's oil and taxes to the city from oil drilling. In rereading our own statement right before I spoke, our criticisms of this legislative agenda, I really feel there's just a lot of room in the language of this agenda to go either way. I really believe that the statements in this agenda would allow the city, yes, we need money, but that's one of the two, I think this was one of only two priority items, was the need for more money so that we can phase out of oil, right? So that we can safely shut down our oil operations. That's, that's music to my ears, to quote Cindy Allen. So I think going forward, this is a lot about in our legislative agendas about response, you know? How are we going to respond to a piece of legislation, maybe not our own, right? How are we going to network? That's the other, other role of this, of this area of our city government. How are we going to network with legislators? Lena Gonzalez is our, is our person. She came from Long Beach. She knows Long Beach. She understands, having been on this council, you know, the challenge of balancing, you know, our oil income and revenues with, with the public health needs. And I would suggest, in addition to the homeless crisis, hate to add another one, but air quality is a crisis in Long Beach. And, and is, is also a historic disparity of who suffers the most, which are low-income communities of color in our, in our corridors, our toxic corridors. Urban oil drilling contributes to this. I would ask you very much to be supportive and maybe on our own, create some more regulations for our urban oil wells, some more safety precautions, because one-third of the population in Long Beach lives within this 3,200-foot setback. And this is across town. This is not an east side, west side issue. You can, whether it's in Alameda Heights or, or over on the west side, their oil wells are everywhere, and people are suffering from urban oil drilling. So just ask for support moving forward. Thank you very much.
Members, please cast your vote.
Vice Mayor? Motion is carried.
12, please.
Report from Economic Development, recommendation to authorize city manager to enter into contracts with organizations that manage business improvement districts in an aggregate total amount not to exceed $100,000 to deliver programs citywide.
This is pretty, pretty, pretty exciting. We'll do a quick staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Beau Martinez, Director of Economic Development. As part of the emergency effort, the council directed city staff to work on establishing grant funds for local businesses that have been affected or impacted by property damage and vandalism. City staff identified $510,000 from Repurpose ALBE Recovery Act funds to directly small businesses, including $100,000, in additional funding for business improvement districts to support sidewalk activation, special events, and clean and safe initiatives. Funding will be made available as quickly as possible to the business organization associations that have business district, business improvement district associations that have supported businesses and local economic recovery through the COVID-19 pandemic. And the 10 bids will be receiving funds ranging from $6,700 to $12,000. That concludes my presentation, Mayor and City Council. Happy to answer any questions.
And, and this is in addition to the VIP grants that businesses can directly apply for?
Yes, it'll be in addition to those funds.
Great. And when does that open up?
Those funds, the Vision Improvement Program will open up on Wednesday, February 22nd.
Wednesday, February 22nd. Okay, Councilwoman Kerr?
Tomorrow.
Great. Councilman Austin?
Very supportive.
Great. And thank you, Councilwoman Soro. Yes, that's tomorrow. The grant applications open up tomorrow. People, hey, people are really interested in this program. We know that we've had some challenges with burglaries and break-ins, but the biz, the biz care team's been out there on the doors. The police department's been, you know, very responsive and out talking to folks, and, and this will engage our business improvement districts, give them another tool to be able to work together. Councilman Austin?
Yes, I did have a question. In terms of, we do have some very active and thriving business improvement districts that are being creative, that are engaging their businesses, and they have access to, to communicate with those businesses. What provisions do we have for those areas of the cities that we don't have business improvement districts in?
Mayor, Councilmember Austin, we've actually been out there convincing our underserved areas as well as our CDBG, low-income, moderate-income communities to make sure that they're aware of the, not only the Vision Proven Program, but other resources that are available to help their small businesses during this, this challenging times.
All right. Councilwoman Zendejas?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Austin, for lifting up that good question. Thank you for that after, answer. I hope that we do focus on addressing that. One of the things is that I am very excited about this, especially right now. I feel that it's very fitting to be able to do this, so thank you for thinking outside the box and creating, even if it's a little bit of, of help that we can give them. Any help is great help for our businesses right now, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Allen?
Yeah, Beau, I just want to say thank you too. This has just been a devastating time for businesses, and so to have this is, is really special. Last week, I had the opportunity to visit over 20 businesses on Retro Row and, and talking about this, these programs. And I know that people, businesses are really excited, and I think they're going to be hitting that button first thing in the morning. Also want to give you a huge shout out, because I know you're, we're willing to even come and knock on some doors with some more businesses, and that just means a lot. So thank you so much for this, and thank you for just your dedication to, especially small businesses in the city.
Absolutely. Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, well, this is yet another tool. Members, please cast your vote.
Motion is carried.
All right. Item 13, please.
Report from Health and Human Services and Disaster Preparedness and Emergency Communication. Recommendation to adopt resolution proclaiming the termination of the local emergency and the local health emergency caused by COVID-19 citywide.
Thank you. This is our final staff report of the night, so let's have a staff report here.
Yes, so Mr. Mayor, we do have a staff report on this. This is a pretty monumental day. We are ending our declaration of emergency on COVID. It's been almost three years. We'll get into the timeline a little bit. I can't say how proud I am of our city staff, of our council, of our leadership and jumping in and really saving lives over the past three years. It's been a huge sacrifice for everybody and was a sacrifice for all the right reasons. The community sacrificed, our government teams sacrificed, our nonprofits, and really with the goal of saving lives. We do want to recap a little bit of what has been done over that time. I promise we'll go fast because there's a lot there, but it is important to do that. It also is important to answer questions of what's next. So we know that COVID is still out there. We're still seeing deaths. It's just not at the level where we need a declaration of emergency. It is still absolutely going to be actively managed by our Health Department and our city departments. So I will turn it over to Kelly Colapi, who will help lead our presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. This really is sort of a momentous occasion for us. I mean, this has been, I think we're about 20 days short of three years in being in an emergency. And as your Health Department Director and your Health Officer, it has been quite, quite an event for all of us. And so I do want to take some time and just breathe deep and know that this is, you know, this is where it is. It's been big. So we do want to share an update of just all we were able to achieve together, and we promise, there's a lot of information, but we will move very quickly through it, but we wanted to make sure that there was a really strong record of what this was and what it took going forward. So, you know, it's, it really has taken all of us together to get here, and I just want to acknowledge the incredible partnership of our many city departments, community-based organizations, healthcare organizations, institutions of education, and really all of you. I also want to thank our Health and Human Services team, who have just been outstanding in this process. And my partner through these difficult years, Dr. Davis, for the commitment, passion, and innovation throughout these years to lead these events, because I know without them, we would not have nearly as much to share as I'm going to share with you tonight. So on March 10th of 2020, we had three cases of travel-associated COVID-19 in Long Beach, and we declared our local health emergency. On March 14th, just a few days later, we had what we know as community spread, meaning we couldn't identify it as travel, and here it was, and we knew what was in Long Beach. Since that time, we've had at least one reported case in Long Beach every day and lost about 1,380 people. It's still causing illness. In the past three and a half months, more than 300 people, 350 people have been hospitalized. So it continues to be, you know, it continues to be around, but there's so much happening and so much being taken care of that we can, we can end the emergency. With that, I'll turn it to Dr. Davis to highlight some of what we did in the response.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. So in the three years since our first case, the city has established a robust testing capacity, provided widespread fixed and mobile vaccine access, and provided guidance to businesses, long-term care facilities, and schools and daycares throughout the city. We've shared and monitored data in a timely manner with our data dashboard, monitoring for variants, and publishing in public health journals. In addition, the Venue Task Force was an interdepartmental collaboration formed to help businesses comply with the health orders. We established a 75,000-foot local distribution site, provided search support to our local hospitals, and distributed 350,000 pieces of personal protective equipment to healthcare entities throughout the city. The Venue Task Force achieved compliance with health orders by performing over 2,000 door-to-door visits and responding to 2,500 complaints. To talk about workforce and staffing, we engaged employees across the city in the response and shifted practices, including reassigning 230 city staff, providing testing and early vaccination to our staff, and implementing emergency work policies such as teleworking. We managed over 2,000 surge and volunteer clinical and non-clinical staff from multiple city departments as well as external organizations.
In addition to the response, we were able to provide significant resources to community members and businesses. We provided 5.6 million pieces of PPE to more than 1,200 businesses, as well as education to nearly 10,000 businesses. We worked as hard as we could to amend the health order as soon as possible to ensure that bars could open, to be able to operate as long as they could bring in catered food. We also waived the annual health permit and plan check fees for businesses who were closed due to 19, so as not to cause further economic harm. We provided 128,000 items for young children, more than 18,000 books and educational supplies, and funded, funding to 157 providers to help them stay open. For older adults, we supported more than 6,000 callers from the resource line and more than 100,000 deliveries of food through meals and grocery bags. In addition, through CARES Act and the Long Beach Recovery Act, we directed investments into intensive case management, supportive services, basic need supply kits, and mental health services for Black identifying residents within our city. For businesses, in addition to PPE and education, the city launched four small business grant programs, providing more than $5 million to more than 1,000 businesses across the city. We provided grants for small business transition and technology, outdoor dining, commercial rental assistance, and business license tax and fee grant for full-service restaurants. We also implemented a temporary parklet program with more than 124 parklets at the height of the pandemic. Currently, there are eight permanent parklets and 24 in the application process. The temporary parklet program expired on January 30. Throughout this process, we have been leading the way. We've really been at the forefront of many efforts, including vaccinating first responders, developing a program to identify and message those that were eligible for vaccine, registering about 40,000 people in VaxLB. We were one of the first to get to 99% of our older adults who had their first vaccine. We also were the first to do mass testing and vaccine, as well as in-home and mobile vaccination, testing for high-risk populations, and to implement vaccine verification and testing mandates for city employees and educational institutions. All of these steps led to greater protection of our Long Beach community. You can see there on the side, the New York Times, why Long Beach is a model for the vaccine rollout.
So to address COVID-19 disparities, the city led with data, developing a public-facing dashboard that highlighted COVID-19 disease, vaccination, and testing data by zip code, age, gender, and race and ethnicity to convey disparate COVID-19 impacts. To address the digital divide, we set up a robust COVID-19 information line able to provide information in multiple languages to those with limited access to technology. We provided accommodations for those with disabilities or access and functional needs. We convened a vaccine equity work group made up of community-based organizations, healthcare providers, and city departments, and used the data we had collected to inform our activities, including communication, outreach, and pop-up events, providing nearly 9,000 vaccines. Our mobile vaccination team addressed COVID-19 disparities by providing almost 7,000 in-home vaccinations, conducting nearly 23,000 tests, and setting up at least 2,000 pop-up vaccination events in high-need areas. As far as communicating with residents, to communicate with residents, we established both a general COVID-19 information line to answer questions and make connections to testing and other supports, as well as a vaccine-specific phone line to support people in making appointments for vaccination. The general line took more than 7,000, 70,500 calls since March of 2020, and the vaccine line responded to nearly 17,000 calls, for a total of more than 92,000 calls. We also implemented a robust community communications plan, utilizing more than 90 press conferences, over 700 press releases and updates, as well as over 700 updates to our data dashboard. A big shout out to our communications team and technology and innovation for making this all possible.
As you may remember, we also launched a port testing and vaccine program, and we had teams that were there, often going out to boats to be able to vaccinate people. To maintain, we vaccinated more than 11,000 people by the port vaccination team on both the Long Beach and Los Angeles sides of the port, and provided more than 27,000 tests to port workers. You'll see there the, the news update about visiting sailors vaccinated for COVID-19 at the Port of Long Beach. So what does it look like now? As of February 10th, there have been a total of 1,600, sorry, 161,880 cases, almost 6,000 hospitalizations, and 1,387 deaths. Long Beach had reported the highest number of deaths in January of 2021, where it reached over 330 deaths compared to 117 in 2022, and only 17 since the beginning of this year. Our case rates, our positivity rates, our hospitalizations, everything is now at the low piece of when we're looking at the CDC guidelines, which we're very thankful for. You can see the, the winter surge that occurred, and then it's all gone back down after mid-December. This slide does just a nice job of sort of seeing each of the, you know, each of the seasons and when we had really high rates and low rates, and, and just gives you a nice comparison, starting from the very beginning of 2021 through now. We've also seen a significant reduction in outbreaks in the workplace, our long-term care and school outbreaks. In 2122, the team responded to 380 outbreaks compared to 87 in 2223. And as far as our employees go, the City Occupational Health Clinic, we kept them really busy. They screened more than 7,626 employees, of which they isolated or quarantined nearly 5,000 employees over time.
So now I'll talk about our vaccination status in Long Beach. We're happy to say that 78% of people who live in Long Beach have received at least one dose of COVID-19 vaccine, and 71% are fully vaccinated. There's still work to do to encourage everyone to get their updated bivalent booster. And low bivalent booster uptake is a trend we've seen nationally. low bivalent booster uptake is a trend we've seen nationally. Overall, vaccination rates have been high for our older and senior populations, which is good because advancing age is the greatest risk factor for hospitalization and death from COVID-19 infection. Rates for primary vaccination, as well as booster doses, are lower in the younger age groups. Black and Latino residents in Long Beach have continued to have the lowest vaccination rates compared to other racial and ethnic groups. People in the 90813 and 90805 zip codes have the lowest rates of fully vaccinated and boosted individuals. We will continue to build on our community relationships that we've formed over this last three years to continue to address all of these disparities. And this slide shows the case, hospitalization, and death rate for unvaccinated, which is the top red line, compared to vaccinated, the bottom green line, individuals, highlighting the significant protection the vaccinations give. Those who are unvaccinated are two and a half to three times more likely to get COVID, be hospitalized, or to die from COVID.
So looking forward, we'll be continuing our, our efforts, but at a reduced level. We'll continue to offer free testing and vaccinations at different sites. So at Eldorado Park, MLK Park, we'll be doing pop-up clinics at Ramona Park and Houghton Park. Cal State Long Beach is open on Mondays and Wednesdays, and at Cabrillo High School, we'll be doing testing vaccine, testing during the week of vaccine is available only on Friday and Saturdays. The schedule can be found on longbeach.gov/vaxlb. People can get free tests, so if you, if you have insurance, you can get eight free test kits per month, no copays for the testing, and we're providing rapids to distribute to our community-based organizations, long-term care facilities, and congregate settings. Eventually, testing kits will need to be bought or accessed through insurance, but we're trying to provide as much as possible. Vaccinations are moving into the regular immunization schedule for people, and while most will be commercialized, Moderna is indicating it will offer vaccines free from charge. And, you know, basically, these vaccines are going to be part of, of the future scheduling for adults and for children, and then will be sort of like flu, transitioning to future, future iterations of the vaccine of different bivalents. And then eventually, the COVID-19 vaccination will be transitioned into the routine vaccination processes, including in healthcare offices and pharmacies. Nationwide, or sorry, overall, the response is transitioning from emergency operations to day-to-day duties. Our dashboard will remain updated but less frequently, and surveillance will become part of a routine surveillance protocol. A key impact for us, though, is the ending of the COVID funding. Right now, it funds about 168, 160 employees. We are working to continue some level of service provision through July 2024, but teams will be dismantled as we reach the end of resources. All positions are good until the end of 2023. This will impact testing and vaccine sites, case investigators and health educators, surveillance, school outbreak team, our healthcare-associated infection team, business outbreak team, and we'll have one mobile testing site instead of four. The deep investments in public health really have demonstrated what you can get done when, when you have the resources, but public health systems across the country are facing the same that we are. So we'll be working at the federal and state level to identify additional funding to be able to prepare, as well as to work on a transition plan for, you know, for our team. The one thing that I am concerned about, well, not one, but there are multiple things, but one of the things we are paying attention to is that with the reduction, is that there's really going to be a reduction in federal benefits now that the emergency is ending. So one, you know, Medi-Cal is really the, is really the healthcare for people who are low-income. They have, no one has had to renew their coverage for the last two years, but they are being required to do so now. So everyone is going to get an envelope in the mail that tells them that they have to re-enroll, and if they don't, re-enroll by April 1st, then they're disenrolled from Medi-Cal. So we could face a large number of people who are not currently enrolled. We're doing everything we can to reach out to people, help them complete their paperwork, working as a health services coverage ambassador and things, really trying to make sure that happens. There was a COVID-19 uninsured group program. This will end when the federal COVID-19 public health emergency ends, which is in May, so we'll have people who are, who are uninsured after that time. And Medicare recipients, aside from Part B, will begin to have cost sharing or full costs for testing and treatments. For private insurance, out-of-network coverage will end November 11th. So just a lot of shifts in healthcare coverage. Sorry, I did not forward. And then my, the other is CalFresh. So during COVID, there were, there was an emergency allotment to people, so they received increased benefits to meet their food needs. This ends this month, although the cost of food remains high. So these trends reduce much needed supports to people who continue to struggle for access to healthcare and to nutrition access. We are doing everything we can to support folks.
So I'll end with reviewing some of the common misperceptions that people may have regarding the end of the state of emergency. One misperception is that the emergency is ending because COVID-19 is no longer a problem. COVID-19 remains a substantial risk to our community. However, the emergency allowed us the ability to more quickly put in place a COVID-19 testing, vaccination, and treatment infrastructure, none of which existed at the beginning of the pandemic. COVID-19 will be with us for the foreseeable future, and layered prevention strategies and risk-based decision-making will continue to be important for all of us to do. In addition, guidances such as the mask-wearing guidelines, as well as health orders, are independent of a state of emergency, and both may be updated if the situation warrants I also just want to put in a plug that if you haven't yet received your updated bivalent booster, as the data shows, we're, we're lagging in that respect. Now's the time, so it's still saving lives. And I'd also like to acknowledge and appreciate everyone who's worked on the COVID-19, COVID-19 response for the city of Long Beach, including the health department's communicable disease and emergency response staff, reassigned health and city staff, our city's first responders, our community-based organizations, our hospitals, long-term care facilities, and healthcare provider partners, our Long Beach Unified School District, Long Beach City College, and Cal State Long Beach partners, our business and workplace partners, and the numerous volunteers who contributed countless energy and hours to protect those who live, work, play, and learn in Long Beach. It truly takes a village. This concludes our presentation, and we're open for questions.
All right, thank you. Just want to take a moment, absolutely. Just want to take a moment and just, just acknowledge our, our team of city employees, our health department, our city health officer, Anisa Davis, Kelly Collopy, our entire city organization, for the incredible effort that you've led over the last three years, literally changing our organization and saving lives. Let's just hear it for them for a moment. I heard all that you said about what this means and what it signifies. We're entering that proclamation, but we still have to learn from our experiences over the last three years. We still have to maintain our, our education of the community. We know COVID-19 is, it's here. It's here, we don't know that it's ever gonna, gonna leave, and we know that there are risk factors that align with opportunity and social conditions and health and, you know, diabetes and age and, you know, heart disease, and all these things are risk factors. So, you know, I, I love that you acknowledge that. We still have, we still will always have work to do here around public health, which is why it's great that we have our public health department, that we are unique, and that we are one of three cities in the state with that public health department, and we've really shown, we've shown, if anything, I think we've, I think that we've, we've done a service in general to the profession of public health over the past three years because we used to have to defend public health so often at city council around funding, and now we, we see it's, it's a critical part of what we do as a city. I, I, I also just want to acknowledge the capacity that's been built to really think about it and lead with data. The conversation of equity was, prior to these last few years, the conversation about equity was a question at city council. Now it permeates at all of our language. We understand it, we fundamentally talk, talk about it. You have the Latino Health Access Work, Mi Vida Cuanta. You have the Black Health Equity Collaborative. You have Ron Arias Health Equity Center. You see that the city has built capacity, has, has literally changed in how we deliver services, and, and much of that happened over the past three years. We also have to acknowledge the community's role, the community response. Our community stepped up in a big way in terms of philanthropy, generosity, you know, doing outreach and education so people can understand the benefits of vaccination at a time when it was scary. You know, people setting up food pantries, more than a dozen additional food pantries across the city, hundreds, if not thousands, of volunteers, you know, opening up trunks and delivering food and helping people get food on the table in a moment where we'd never done some of this work before. I mean, we've supported organizations, but not to this, to this degree. So I think that, that spirit of the Long Beach community, we really need to recognize and learn from and go back on as we, as we face big challenges, we really need to think about what worked during that moment with the community. And so, you know, this is an important, an important moment. These last three years have been hard, but I think we're, we're a better-off city now, more efficient, more responsive, and smarter based on the experiences that we've had over these last three years. Councilwoman Kerr.
Yeah, just a few comments. I just want to thank the team. I was a member of the governance team of the school district during all of this with you, and I just want to say thank you. I can't speak on their behalf anymore, but I will speak on behalf of me for being such an incredible partner in keeping families and kids safe at a time that was really, really scary for kids and families. And we couldn't have done that without the daily or multiple times a day phone calls that you had with staff at the school district, giving us the most up-to-date information that you had just received from somewhere else. So the partnership and collaboration saved lives, it kept our faculty safe, it kept our students safe, and I'm really, really grateful as someone who has kids in this town. So I know my colleagues have a lot to say, and many of them are here for the whole duration, so I will defer to them, but thank you very, very much.
Councilwoman Zanayos.
Thank you, Mayor. I think one of the greatest things that we have in the city of Long Beach is having our own health department, as Mayor indicated. But what's even more important than that, and what I'm even more grateful for, is having just exemplary people leading in this, and that was Kelly Collopy, Tom Modica, Dr. Davis. I cannot thank you enough. I know that my resident Karen Reeside stood up and gave you a standing ovation for all that you have done. If I could stand up, I would give you a standing ovation because you just did an incredible job. I know that for a fact, we worked with the community-based organizations like Centro Cha to bring forward Mi Vida Cuanta because we knew that the disparities were not going to help us, and that was not the Long Beach way. But when we came to you, you guys stepped up, and I think that that's very important. Also, you know, I've had millions of stories of people with disabilities being really, really fearful of COVID, and one of the things that I was so very proud of was the fact that you had a mobile unit to go to them, and I think that that was really, really important, and it was out-of-the-box thinking. And I will specifically remember this mom that called me and said, "My son, my son who is disabled and wheelchair-bound is really sick. I'm really sick, and my daughter's really sick, and we cannot get to test, to a testing site because we have to stay indoors. We are, we're almost 99% sure that we have COVID." And when I told them about the mobility, the mobile unit that we had, they were so excited, and we were able to get them an appointment for the very next morning, and thank God, at that time, they did not have COVID, and you don't understand how thankful they were just to be able to get tested and be able to have that peace of mind. There was another lady in my district that is paralyzed from the neck down that really needed to go get that vaccine, and she was like, "I'm, I, I'm in my bed all day, I, I can't go, and so I don't have caregivers to take me over there." And again, shared the mo, the mobile unit with them, and again, she was very thankful that she was able to get her vaccine in her home. So I know that there's so much that you've done beyond this, but I just wanted to, you know, shine a little light on those little things that meant the world. So again, thank you for the leadership. Thank you for leading your teams in the right way, and these have been incredible three years of, of so much grief, of so much hurt, of so much confusion, but at the end of the day, we all are stronger because of it and because we all work together. So for that, I thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Austin.
And I certainly agree with those comments. I think we all are better because of the experience, and even though it was a painful, uncertain, chaotic experience, it's hard to believe that, you know, we, we've been in this for, for three years almost. I, I want to just echo the comments. I think our, our health department proved its, its worth in the city. Other cities are looking at this model and saying, "Well, why not us?" I think it showed that we have the ability to be flexible, but also I give, give a lot of credit to obviously Kelly and Dr. Davis for leading the health department, but to Tom Modica for leaving, leading the city team. Our city team, city employees were, were asked to, to flex, be a lot more flexible, to work outside of their job classifications, to do, do work above and beyond, and also expose themselves to great risk in the process, and they did so, right? And I've said it 100 times, there was no blueprint, there was no kind of playbook to, to work from, and we, we were able to, to show dedication, to show innovation, to show resilience, and to improve each and every week. I can remember the, the calls that we were getting as a city council, almost daily updates in the beginning for several months, daily updates, daily updates, daily updates, and then they started waning off to, you know, three times a week or twice weekly. And, you know, we take a lot of that, that crisis kind of management, the crisis, crisis management for, for granted today, but our team, our city team came together in a remarkable way. And by the way, when this was all started, we had an interim city manager, by the way. We didn't even know who our city manager was going to be, but the way our city manager and our city team kind of responded during that moment, it made it very clear that this was our city manager, and we, we needed to continue to go in this direction. And so I, I just want to say thank you, kudos to not only our, our city management team, our health department, but to the city council and, and the entire city team for the way they have responded during this emergency, time of emergency. Now, I don't think there's any going back to normal either. I don't know what we know, what that looks like, or, or if that's even possible. This is a new day, we'll forge forward, I think, smarter and better as, as a city, and I've been, it's been an honor to kind of serve during this, this wild and crazy time on the city council. I think that I'm, I'm certainly a, a better for it, more thoughtful, and, and I, I think, should there be an emergency in the future, we'll be better prepared, and we will be prepared to deal with it as a city. So thanks a lot for the comments, and, and good work to everybody overall, and let's keep it up.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sorrow.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I definitely want to also add to the appreciation and acknowledgement of our city leadership. We often hear a lot about what happens when government, specifically local government, does the wrong thing or when things don't go right, but I think that we've definitely shown in the city of Long Beach that we, this is an example nationwide of what happens when we have the right leadership, of what government, local government can do right and really save lives, and really also be a model to other cities as well that may not know what to do. know what to do. And I also just want to share that it was also during this time that we had our uprising for racial justice where, again, public health was uplifted in this conversation around equity. And so there was a lot happening, and I just appreciate the leadership, the calm manner. I mean, I came in, in the midst of the pandemic, and this is when the vaccinations start rolling out, and just the staff's ability to pivot every time. We were like, "Well, people don't know how to use the computer. What do we do?" And we figure it out with the team, you know, "Well, we need to bring that to them, not just the mobile, but bringing it to the local parks and then figuring out how to make that work." It was just really, while, while it was a really hard time, I remember how amazing it was to be able to have that quick local response and making sure people were getting information from the local partners in language as well. The question I do want to ask you is, there are still people who are fearful, very fearful. I mean, we spent the last three years, you know, in our homes and then wearing masks and still being careful in social distancing, distancing to some extent, and there are still real fears that this COVID-19 is still mutating, and there's a potential for another outbreak. Can you share a little bit more about what we're doing to make sure we're monitoring, but also just how can we assure people that, you know, you know, what are steps that we will take to inform the public if that was to happen again?
Thank you for the question, Councilwoman. We are, so there's a lot of new surveillance that's going on nationally and at the state, and then we are continuing our local monitoring. And so I think, kind of like what Councilman Austin said, there's a new kind of baseline of the way we do things, and so part of that is really kind of paying attention to the landscape of all respiratory viruses, so looking a lot more closely at hospitalizations and capacity and new variants. So even though there might not be the same sort of urgency or type of watching that's going on, there's, there's now an infrastructure that's in place that will be monitoring these things so that we can provide information and communication if there should be some new mutations, which is what viruses do, so that wouldn't be a surprise.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rixodi.
I don't know if we can pull up slide number 19, but I felt like slide 19 kind of codified a lot of the conversation that we were having because there's a section in slide 19 that basically was a demo around, let's see if we can go to it. I just thought this part was really interesting. I don't know if people caught this, where it said, "The first international pharma logistics masterclass," and it basically was a, it was a masterclass based on the rollout we had done here in the city of Long Beach, right? And I feel like that codifies the conversation that we're having here about just like how monumentous the work was that we did as a city, we did as a health department, right? Is the fact that somebody actually thought to produce a masterclass based on the work here in Long Beach as a way of, of demonstrating that to other cities and how you could emulate that, right? You all know, I'm an epidemiologist, right? So you're never going to hear me do anything up here but sing the praises of the fact of our health department and the wonderful work that you do. And as somebody who was fielding a whole bunch of questions on social media and private messages and things around misinformation, and you had the slider on the misinformation mouse, right? Like, having like information from credible sources that were local that I could point people to during the pandemic was absolutely critical, right? And I think so much of the work that we did over the last several years and like building trust in communities that legitimately didn't trust the city, right? Having to be creative about engagement in communities that hadn't been engaged, right? It's something that we take with us when we talk about, you know, Councilmember Austin was talking about like not going back to that normal, right? We shouldn't want to go back to that normal, right? That normal left communities disengaged, disinvested in, right? And so as we kind of move forward, we take all of those lessons learned into all the work that we do, and that's really that conversation we always have around equity, right? Engaging with communities that don't typically have voices. And so I'm always going to talk about the importance of that, the things that we've learned, and then just the continued importance of like, again, investment in our public health infrastructure, right? Thinking about, you know, as the, the mayor mentioned, right? Talking about the things that left our communities vulnerable, right? Those comorbidities, those chronic diseases, things like that. So as we move forward, we think about a health department, it's just like, okay, well, how do we invest in those things? So when the next X comes, right? We're prepared for that. Our, our, our communities are more prepared, our communities are healthier, we're, we're, they're, they're vibrant, and so we're not as susceptible to these types of things, right? Like, that's the conversation that we need to have going forward, and I'm, I'm excited to have with my council colleagues to really think about how to take our, our communities forward to that, to that next step. So again, fantastic work. Thank you for the presentation. Again, it's something that we need to be reminded of, is like where we were and where we've come, right? And then again, in a few years, thinking about how we've taken those lessons learned and applied them to new, to challenges and new areas that we need to address. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Duggan.
I just want to thank you all. I was not part of staff, obviously, when this all happened, but you kept us informed, you were progressive with vaccinations, and I just want to echo things that I support what the other council members have said with the job that you all did. Your staff report was extensive and detailed. I think more people need to know the details. Would it be possible to get that staff report so we can share it? And I'd like to send it out in our newsletter. I think residents deserve that, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Supran.
Thank you for the presentation, all the great work. I think it was mentioned earlier this evening that it's astounding that all your other duties didn't stop while this went on. And as incredible as this report is tonight, all, the, the breadth of your responsibilities is, is just tremendous, and you do a great job with all that. When I think of all the areas you're into, I mean, from all the public health concerns, I, I just have a note here, lead paint that you're into that piece a while back, the Veterans' Commission, you know, all these things that, that come under the heading of the Health Department. I know Animal Care Services used to be there. Thank goodness someone gave you a break from that. But we had a busy weekend in the 4th District, and I ended up on a holiday emailing a bunch of people about an issue, and I've already thanked you for this, but at 7:51 PM, Kelly was the one who responded to that group email. So all I can say is thank you for your service to the city and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Allen.
Yeah, just, everyone's already said it, but thank you so much. I just feel like that's not even enough. I'm just eternally grateful for all the work that you did at Tom is a City, what you all did with the Health Department, Dr. Davis. You're all like superheroes, and it's got to feel good because you saved lives, and, and that's got to feel really good. So thank you so much for all you've done.
Thank you. I'll just, you know, wrap it up just with just some thoughts. I think the council members nailed it. They all talked about different parts of really the best of our city, that, that, you know, some incredible moments in our city. And, you know, Councilwoman Kerr mentioned to me just a moment ago, it was a big transition for our city, too. So Councilman Austin mentioned it was a city manager that came in, was also a new superintendent at the school dis, school district during that time, Community College District at that time, a number of elections within our city, new council members came right in and, you know, got right into the movement and the effort, a mayor's race, new leadership toward the end before we got to the end of it. You also saw a great spirit of unity during that time because we had to overcome some big decisions together. It was when we dealt with the racial emergency. It was not easy. Staff was out there having those, these were hard conversations, and it was, there were, there were landmines, frankly. It was hard to figure out where to go, but you had to continue taking steps to go forward. There was the migrant children's facility. We had to take that on as well, right? There was already an economic down, there was an economic downturn as a part of that. City council had to step forward, put protections out for workers, make sure we offer things like sick days and a right to their jobs back. These were things that no one had ever done before, that actually shaped the rest of the state, and we're not done yet. We know we have a homelessness emergency because we had a lack of housing prior to the pandemic, and the poverty and the rising cost of housing exacerbated that. We're not done yet, and we know our economy has changed. We know we just finished a downtown plan, built 5,000 units, and, you know, we invested in things like office space. Work from home isn't going anywhere. That's going to have a significant impact on restaurants. How we think about pulling college and universities and families back into our downtown in the immediate is going to be critical to how we recover. So I just want to remind folks that we talked about, when we talked about this early on, we said this is going to be a long recovery. Just because we're, we're ending this declaration of local emergency does not mean we're not still in recovery. It still will require investment and a spirit of unity and collective sort of partnership to work together to, to overcome this. The last thing I want, really want to say is, and I think it's fitting, you know, Mayor Garcia was our leader during that crisis, and he demonstrated tremendous leadership and focus when it was difficult. The discussions about shutting down the economy and all those things were hard. While he dealt with his own personal impact, he was, he was personally afflicted by this tragedy. And so we're, we're glad to see him in Congress and still being a part of this, but I think it's important also at this moment to, to say his name. Mayor Rob Garcia did a great job. That's right. Tom.
Yeah, so I, I really want to thank the council for all the, the very kind things about our team. They are incredibly impressive, the amount of work that they did and compassion and, and just organization and just the, the response was amazing. But I also really want to thank this body. So we got to do what we did because we had the support of the city council in some of the most difficult decisions I think we've ever had to make as a city. Some of those were presented to you, and you made those really tough decisions, and others you had to, you know, in a very awkward situation, kind of trust us to, to make those decisions on your behalf, and that was what happened when we got into an emergency, particularly a health emergency, where the health officer needs to make medical decisions irrespective of the comments that we receive from the community or business, and we had to make some incredibly tough decisions. And through all of it, I, I would talk to just every single one of you, and you always understood, whether you agreed or not, you know, sometimes we didn't, mostly have agreement, sometimes we'd have some disagreement, but every single one of you understood what they had to do, the mission that they were charged with. You had great ideas, and you also had a lot of support for the ultimate decision of protecting public health. So I, I can't say that that is common. It did not happen in most cities, and we just appreciate it more than you know. There's no way we could have done it without the work that you all did, so thank you so much.
Fantastic. Thank you. And we have no public comment, correct? Okay, members, please cast your vote.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Next is item 14, please.
Report from City Attorney, recommendation to declare ordinance amending the Long Beach Municipal Code to Raise the Preference Cap Up to 50,000, read the first time and laid over the next regular meeting of the city council for final reading.
Thank you. Is there a second here? Any public comment? Members, please cast your vote.
Motion is carried.
Item 15.
Report from City Attorney, recommendation to declare ordinance relating to Long Beach Certified Uniform Program Agency, read and adopted as read citywide.
We need a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing none, members, please cast your vote.
Councilwoman Sorrow. Motion is carried.
17.
Communication from Vice Mayor Allen, Councilwoman Kerr, Councilwoman Sorrow. Recommendation to request city manager to work with the Public Works Department to prepare an update on the city's Safe Streets Action Plan.
Vice Mayor Allen.
On the Safety Street Plans, sorry, I didn't have my mic on. I do want to acknowledge and recognize the hard work of the Public Works Department. They've done a great job of building up the multi-modal mobility options and expanding a public transit like our free shuttle. And I know they've also reduced limits on 100 streets, speed limits throughout the city, and I can tell you, I think outside of getting shots in people's arms, this is something that I've heard the most about from my residents, reducing those speed limits. So thank you, Eric, and everything that you've done. I know that this is a work in progress, and unfortunately, we're still hearing about traffic-related pedestrian and cyclist fatalities. So last year, 45 pedestrians, cyclists and motorists died in crashes on streets of Long Beach, and 60% of these fatalities were pedestrians. So I'd like to see an update on our Safe Streets Action Plan. I'd like to know where we are, what are the next steps, and what else we can do to protect our residents from traffic-related fatalities. So thank you again, Eric Lopez, and everyone in Public Works. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kerr.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor, for this opportunity to sign on to this. One of the things that we get as new council members and council members get are Commander's Watch updates of incidents that have happened. So that happened, we know, in December for me, and some of the most jarring first incidents I heard about were pedestrian deaths this year. I think we had two or three the three days, last three days of the year, and one again on New Year's morning, to the point where when I got one, I would yell, and my husband would, "What?" And I said, "Someone else died on our streets." So I really appreciate the opportunity to go in depth and for staff to take a look at this of what we can do better. We know that one other, you know, effect of the pandemic is people were driving a lot less, and the freeways were empty, and the streets were empty, and people were speeding. And so we know that people are still speeding, even though we're all back up on the streets. We see it every day in our neighborhoods. We see it in our corridors, whether they're small east-west corridors like Bixby or large north-south corridors like Clark in the 5th District. So the opportunity to, to reexamine what we're doing and double down on our efforts. One question I did have that was specific or request that we know, I know we've used CHP statewide data in the past and wondering if we could really look at using more local data to inform the report, so looking at our LBPD or maybe surrounding communities. So we have a really accurate, because there was a discrepancy in those numbers. If you look at fatalities and incidences, they were lower according to the CHP than our own LBPD data. So if we could use really local data to help inform the report, I think would be really helpful, and I look forward to staff bringing this back. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sorrow.
Yes, I want to thank Vice Mayor Allen for bringing the item four with the Councilwoman Kerr signing on as well. You know, I, I did a lot of presentation on pedestrian safety because during that time we had, you know, in the past, in 2022 and, and 2021, we had high fatality rates, and so we, at that time, Carl Higman had played an instrumental role in creating the plan, and the last meeting we had with him, and it was talking actually about Vision Zero. So I'm glad that, and we had talked about doing a presentation and bringing it to council, so I'm glad that we're able to do so in his memory and the great work he's done to creating it, so thank you.
Councilman Austin.
Thank you. I think this is a great item to follow up on, you know, a conversation that we had several years ago. Clearly, we're not at a Vision Zero space right now, but my, my question is more, more personnel-related. I know we, we lost our, our traffic engineer unexpectedly a few months ago. Can you just update us on where we are in terms of replacing that position, and will that position be necessary to actually complete this, this particular plan or item?
Yes, so Paul Van Dyke is our acting traffic engineer, so he's stepped up into that role. We have active recruitments right now for both city engineer and traffic engineer. So we had looked at doing maybe a combined one, and now we're looking at hiring one of each.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmembers Zindejas.
Thank you. This is ver, a very, very important item, so I thank you, Vice Mayor Allen, for bringing this forward. I think it's very important that we take another look at it and actually see where we're at. I, I have been advocating for my residents for, for this particular reason as well because we've had a lot of incidents in my district, especially on Pacific, and I think that it's been really great working with Public Works to be able to let them know the urgency of the need for something to happen on Pacific as we continue to see that there's accidents there, and the team is working really hard to. And the team is working really hard to bring forward some alternative solutions. We do have a plan in place as a city, but we're also in very much need of doing something now. Meanwhile, the plan comes to fruition. So just wanted to say thank you to Public Works for working with my team on this and really finding solutions. So thank you again, Vice Mayor Allen, for shedding light on this very important topic.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. I think it's a great item. Vision Zero's been a priority for our city for a long time. And I think it's important that while we do all these additional things, we don't lose sight of our priority to have livable, walkable, pedestrian-friendly communities. Members, please cast your vote.
Motion is carried.
18, please.
Communication from Vice Mayor Allen, Councilwoman Zendejas, Councilwoman Sorrow. Recommendation to request city manager to work with the Police Department to present the February 9, 2023 memorandum on public safety communications to the City Council.
Vice Mayor Allen.
Yes, I just want to say thank you and recognize the PD for this memo. I know we had some discussions last year and how we can better communicate with the public. And I know I, last year, I got a lot of questions from my residents. So I really look forward to this presentation on public safety communications and also the tools and technologies the department uses with regards to some of that communications. And then I also look forward to understanding like what new technologies are out there and what other police departments are using with regards to mass communication. So it's a great memo, and I look forward to sharing that with the entire community. So thank you.
Councilwoman Zendejas.
Thank you. Thank you again, Vice Mayor Allen, for inviting me to sign on to this very important item along with Councilwoman Sorrow. I think that this is a key tool in our city's efforts for transparency. And I'm so happy to be a co-sponsor on this.
Fantastic, thank you. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, members, please cast your vote.
Motion is carried.
19, please.
Communication from Councilwoman Sorrow. Recommendation to increase appropriations in the general fund group and the city manager department by $50,000 to provide a contribution to the united Cambodian community.
Councilwoman Sorrow.
Thank you. I just wanted to share that this will be the first Songkran, Long Beach Songkran celebrated. And it looks like Sangkreta because it's in Sanskrit. It's actually, the TA is silent, so it's Songkran. And it's the New Year that is observed in Southeast Asian countries and part of Southeast, South Asia. So it includes Cambodia, Laos, Thailand, Myanmar, Sri Lanka and some parts of India. And it's to recognize and honor the diverse community that celebrates it and through traditions of art, culture and learning. So please save the date for it. It's going to be on April 1st at Long Beach City College PCC campus. And look forward to sharing more about this celebration, New Year celebration. Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you. Vice Mayor Allen, anything?
I support the item.
Is there any public comment? Members, please cast your vote.
Motion is carried.
21, please.
Report from City Attorney. Recommendation to adopt a resolution declaring that the COVID-19 paid supplemental sick leave ordinance sunset on February 21, 2023, and declare ordinance repealing ordinance 20-0017, read the first time and laid over the next regular meeting of the City Council for final reading, citywide.
Thank you for the motion. Is there a second here? Thank you. Is there any public comment here? Members, please cast your vote.
Councilwoman Sorrow. Motion is carried.
Thank you. Now we're at general public comment number two. I'm calling for public comment, but I don't see anyone out there. All right, so we're moving on to announcements and adjournment. Councilman Austin.
Thank you so much. I'd like to just take this opportunity to adjourn tonight's meeting in honor of Kevin Evans. And I want to just, first of all, take quotes from Blair Cohen, who's the executive director of the Bixby Knowles Business Improvement District. And he starts with, "For more than a year, Kevin Evans was a welcome fixture in Bixby Knowles, helping to maintain the cleanliness of our business corridors. He arrived at the BKBI office at 10:00 AM, Monday through Friday. You could hear him approaching the building as he blasted his music on his bike commute. He greeted us with, and greeted us and started his morning routine, plugging in his devices, music speaker, organizing his recyclables. He wore a safety vest with pride, and he walked with purpose and determination. Through his work with Duke Givens in the care closet, we gained a whole new insight to those experiencing homelessness and the many dimensions there are with the issue. Kevin and his friends chose to live off the grid in tents. It is easy for the average person to drive by a row of tents, whether they be along the river or along the back building, and cast angry aspersions to those anonymous individuals. Well, Kevin wasn't anonymous. He was a man, he lived in a tent, he showed up when asked and put in a full day's work every day. If you worked at the Expo or around Bixby Knowles and traveled, you knew who Kevin was either by face or by name, and he'll be truly missed." That was from Blair Cohen, and I'll just add my comments. Obviously, my office is in the Expo and had the opportunity to experience Kevin on a daily basis. Kevin was tragically taken away by an accident near the 710 freeway on an off-ramp. And much of the conversation that we just had regarding a Vision Zero, he was, I think, exposed and underscored the risk of homelessness and those who live on the streets face, just living every day, trying to traverse these tough streets, unforgiving streets. The truck probably didn't even see him, and he was killed instantaneously. The point, I think, we shouldn't let his story or let him die in vain. I think there's opportunities to improve, you know, our traffic safety, not only for those who are experiencing homelessness, but for everybody in our city. And this is a tragedy because this individual spent countless hours every day working to make our community better, right? He was homeless. And he's part of the big narrative and the conversation that we're having today and many, a couple thousand, 3,000 folks who are living on the street just like him. But the work that he was doing, providing him purpose, but also of service to our city. We can actually quantify that close to a million tons of debris have been attributed to the work that he did in his organization and with the others in his organization to make Long Beach better. Along the 710 freeway, along numerous alleys and business corridors in most of our council districts, Kevin was present. And so we owe him a great deal of gratitude and understand that those who are on the streets are not necessarily worthless. These are these individuals that also have value, but they're broken. And if we can give them opportunity to turn things around, good things can happen from it. And I think Kevin's story is one that we just need to uplift a little bit more and understand that there are others out there doing good work just like him. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kerr.
Yes, thank you. I too would like to close the meeting in honor of Kevin Evans. Kevin worked the corridor mostly along Atlantic in D5, and he was present in D5 every single day. And I saw him most days of the week because the business corridor is adjacent to my home. And so he'd be on his bike with his Home Depot bucket. He refused to use the trash pickers. He always did it by hand, was picking up trash and weeds and contributing in a positive way to our community, who always had a kind smile and a wave for him. So I am grateful to his service to our city. We mourn with him and his friends and his partner, who are part of our unhoused community. And we lift them up tonight. Thank you.
Thank you to both the council members for that very heartfelt tribute. We have our work cut out for us. Thanks, everyone, for participating in our local government tonight. This meeting is adjourned. Have a good night.